Let's call this meeting to order.
Aye, Captain.
And be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body. And it's old prices for a school. Do I have a motion?
So.
Second.
Second. We are now in closed meeting.
Wow.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Spitz.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Creed.
Aye.
Chair Polis.
Aye. The next item on the agenda is to certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative reported vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Court of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification motion applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion, please?
Submit.
Second.
We move in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Spitz.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Creed.
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Chair Polis.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The next item on the agenda is our invocation, and at this time if everybody would please rise and have a moment of silence and reflect on the things that are before us tonight. And following that, we will have Mr. Meadows lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
All right, the next item is an addendum, and we have one.
Yeah, we have one.
Mr. Brown?
If I can find it. Okay, got it. I would like to add an addendum, or request that we add an addendum, as a resolution approving the sale of the former prices for elementary school property.
Do we have a motion?
Submit.
Second.
Moving second, and this will go into new business, Mr. Meadows?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll bring this up in new business. Roll call, please.
Ms. Spitz.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Creed.
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Chair Polis.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, now we're going to start with our public hearings. The following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the Burbs section of the Roanoke Times on November 17th, 2013, and November 14th, I'm sorry, November 24th, 2013. And the first one is a proposed intent to abandon a portion of Elliot Creek Road. And who's going to lead that?
I believe Mr. Sandy was, but I know that he was getting some copies of it.
He's coming down the hall after now.
We got there fast.
We get a copy, so I know there's a lot of folks in the general public, and I asked them to make a few copies so that they will be able to have them.
Steve, your timing's perfect. This has been a request for an abandonment of a 1.54 mile portion of Elliot Creek Road heading east from the intersection with Craig Mountain Road, and this is pursuant to Section 331-151. So, Steve, if you could provide a little more background on that, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll just give you a little information that we have ascertained just through the request, and I think you have copies of this in your packet as well that shows the area highlighted in yellow on this map is the area that's proposed or requested to be abandoned. The Witt property is on both sides of the road, so this is one parcel here. You can see the road we're showing ends here at the crossing of the creek, and then goes back this way back to Craig's Mountain Road with the intersection back here and Sugar Grove Road back in this area. And this is also the Witt property, as well as this property, and probably should have highlighted the boundaries of those properties, but the property goes on both sides of the road for this entire length shown in yellow. This map also shows some of the adjoining property owners. You may hear from some of them tonight, so hopefully you can see those on your map that shows which property they may be speaking about as they talk to you about their desires for the road to either stay open or to close. There's, I gave you, also gave you a copy of the VDOT county roadmap that looks like this, and what I've done is just highlight the pink section. It shows the existing length of the road. Now, this map shows 1.14 miles is the distance, and what we've shown is actually closer to a mile and a half, but both points come to the creek and stop at the creek, so it looks like it actually stops there. And there's actually a survey as well that you have in your packet. I think I have a copy of that that indicates that the end of state maintenance is in that general area as well. So according to this map as well, the end of state maintenance is here where it crosses the creek. So again, this area here would be the yellow area on the previous map that I showed going back to the intersection with Craig's Mountain Road and Sugar Grove Road. I don't have pictures of the road, the actual road. I think some of you have been out there and either driven on it or seen parts of the road that, you know, it is narrow, it's not traveled much at all, but it is still part of the state system, Route 675 through this section. So it is technically, the public can come up and down that road, you know, at any time and go through. Now this, I will say, if you've ever driven this section of the road anywhere else, it forwards the creek several times in different places, and it's been a while since I've actually been down to where this road ends at the creek, but I understand it's a pretty significant drop down to the creek. I wouldn't say impassable, but it's not easily passable to get through there, so that's just a little bit of background information on the road itself, what's there, the distance, and then kind of what the properties around it look like. We also tried to identify known cemeteries on the properties nearby. There's one here at the bottom of the screen, which is relatively close to the property line of the Witt property, which is this line right here, and this looks like it's on the Musselman property. And then another known cemetery that we know of was back further, back Craig's Mountain Road. There may be other family cemeteries or other cemeteries that we're not aware of. These are the ones that we know of that are out there in that area. And this cemetery, for instance, I'm really not sure how they access that or what the legal access is to this cemetery. It could be back this way off the bottom of the page. I just, I really don't know what the legal access is for that, so if they have a legal access to Elliot Creek Road, that may be something that they would demonstrate through a plaque or, you know, something like that if it is that way. And that goes for any other property owners. They have legal access through the Witt property to access this road. You know, there may be some of those cases that may be presented to you tonight. You know, of course, I didn't do a legal research on each lot to know for sure if that exists or not. And I've got a couple extra copies of this if anybody needs a copy from the VDOT. So I'll leave this map up if you want, and then I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
I was going to ask Marty one question, and I don't do real estate law, I litigate, but in regards to, it used to be you could not land lock a piece of property in Virginia, especially a cemetery. Is that still the case?
Yeah, and there may be private rights that Steve was kind of hinting towards that it may exist or not exist for people doing it now, but yeah, you're correct. You can't block someone who's had that access. Now, I wanted to make a comment about process. I think what the code's asking this board to do on this abandoned request is to make a determination of one or two things. In order to find that this road should be abandoned, you have to find one of the two things. You have to either find that no public necessity exists for this road, or you could find that current safety and welfare of the public is best served by closing the road or abandoning the road. So those are the two standards that you got to find when you hear comments from the public or any other information you may find. If you don't find those, then the board should dismiss the request for abandonment. If you do find it, then the board can enter an order of banning the road. You have, the code required you to make that determination within four months of this year, so you got time to get more information if you want. Obviously, nothing's going to be done tonight. That's not the intention. The intention is to get the public's comment on this request, so.
Right, and I should add that to get that public comment, we posted signs out on the road at a couple of different places. We also went a little beyond the code requirement. We actually tried to notify people in this general area. Now, you know, we certainly didn't get everybody, but we tried to get people that had definitely touched the property or had looked like they may have some, you know, potential to use the road or have access to the road. So we did send notification letters out as well identifying the public hearing that was to be held tonight, so. And as Marty said, we're not requesting any action be taken tonight, just a public hearing to hear the comment, the feedback, and then get your direction from there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I want to invite the landowner up?
It's a public hearing, folks are welcome to speak.
It's a public hearing now. Anybody who would like to speak at this public hearing, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Ms. Witt?
You can just minimize.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Karen Dotson Witt. I live at 2292 Elliot Creek Road in Christiansburg. I'm the one who's requesting the abandonment of 1.54 miles of Elliot Creek Road along Elliot This is an aerial view of my property and the road for abandonment indicated by the yellow line just mentioned. The section of the road that's been to the end of the road has also been discontinued, and I have added that into the abandonment. And that will be at the end of the yellow line over to this section too. So the whole entire road. This is, right now, this is maintained. This right here is discontinued and has been discontinued since 1974, and that's also been in request for the abandonment. Again, here is a survey of my property. As you can see, Elliot Creek Road is running through the middle of it. My family has owned and lived here over 25 years. To my knowledge, there is no access to any other state-owned landowner's property, only deeded enabishments of the power and phone companies. This is the beginning of the road at the intersection of Craig's Mountain Road and Elliot Creek Road. Reasons for our quest can be appreciated in the following video. The road is unsafe by nature and is hazardous for public use. The gravel road consists of blind curves on rock cliffs with steep cliffs. Majority of the road is too narrow with five sections approximately nine feet wide, which makes it impossible for two vehicles to pass, or even one vehicle and those on foot, bikes, recreation vehicles, and horses. Road raiders and gravel trucks are too wide to successfully improve the condition throughout the entire road. It is difficult to turn around at the dead end, even with a 30-foot right-of-way. Delivery truck drivers with misunderstood directions have a very difficult time backing out or turning around once they realize they have gone too far down on their road. Emergency vehicles would have trouble getting to the two houses if they met oncoming vehicles who will have difficult time backing up to allow them to pass. When one meets an oncoming vehicle, who's to back up on the road that is unfamiliar and/or near a rock bluff or steep cliffs? Revenue from Montgomery County taxpayers. State money allocated to Gray and Rower Road that is used daily only by one family should be spared for roads that have more necessary traffic, such as Craig's Mountain Road down Proclamation Road. VDOT officials have encouraged me to abandon the road. Expensive to bring the road up to a two-lane road. It would cost taxpayers millions of dollars to widen. Personal and property safety issues. We have had a history of trespassers leaving gates open, joyriding in our pastures, hunting, attempting to catch and ride around horses. My husband surprised a intruder in the garage and was struck on the head. We clean up trash near and in the creek left by those partying at the end, including beer and liquor bottles, clothes, panties, condoms, and food containers. Our second house is at risk of vandalism. I ask you, how many homeowners would like to drive out of their driveway onto a state-maintained road only to meet oncoming traffic and need to back up the driveway again through long roads? Not many. Ask, why are people coming down when they do not know the owner of the property and unfamiliar to the road conditions? I'm not sure. I welcome those who come to visit our home and enjoy the farm and feel safe. I wish to avoid those undesirable individuals who do not respect my home, my property, is unfamiliar with the lay of the road and endangers my family, friends, and neighbors. Individuals that stay at my farm is a terror factor, and the road needs to be kept open for the public to enjoy. Normally, public roads are not recreational areas. Especially when that recreation becomes a nuisance to people living there. Either ways, do not encourage such activities. Several deputies have advised me not to go down if I know someone has gone down the road and not sure if they have come back out. Is that practical? I feel the state parks and national forests are funded for public persons to be enriched. I encourage the board to approve the abandonment request in interest of taxpayers' dollars, supporting the rights of the property owner, and increasing community safety. Stop. That's it. Can you keep going? Sorry about that. Stop.
You're making me dizzy.
I'd like to acknowledge my supporters. I thank you for your time and effort. Have fun.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board? Come forward, please. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Karen Dotson. I am the niece of Karen and Tom Witt, and on my driver's license, I'm actually registered for 2292 Elliot Creek Road, but I currently live in North Carolina. Just took a job down there. So I just want to thank you for giving us the time, sorry, this is really loud, giving us the time to share our point of views on this road abandonment request. It's a very personal issue to our family, since we have owned this land for 25 years and used it, and I support everything Karen just said and all the documents she has given you for reasons to abandon this road. And she is totally correct in that the biggest safety concern we have is this road and anyone that is a stranger and using it for ill intentions. The most common user of this road besides our family are people that are lost or confused, people that don't understand that there's private property on both sides and that you simply drive down for about a mile, you turn around and you come back. So that makes a higher risk for people that, like she said, aren't familiar with the road, don't understand that there are steep cliffs, or that they have to turn around, and when they do, it's most likely on our private property. So I ask that you consider the safety of my family and the use of our land. It is true that many people like to walk down this road or use it for recreational use, and we've complied with that. We understand, you know, as a public road now, we've respected the rights and way of everyone that has used this road, but despite putting up fence, putting up signs for no trespassing, we still have issues with people using this road and using it for, you know, ill intentions. And to speak to the cemetery that is on the Musselman property, you can access that on a road on his property. It's not a public road, but there is a trail and gravel road access that is about one and a half carth wide, so I would say that this is not a land locking anything in that you can still access that cemetery that was shown on the map. And thank you for all your time, and if you have questions, you can ask Karen, or I'd be happy to help.
Mr. Brown?
Hey, I'd like to ask one question. I know when, on the video, I thought I was going to fall off the edge just sitting up here, but has it ever been a need for like a brush truck from a fire department? I know you couldn't take a fire truck down through there, but a brush truck maybe getting in to fight a small fire or anything like that down that road?
There has been a forest fire up there behind.
Give him some mic, please.
There has been a forest fire up behind the second house back in the early 90s, and fire trucks and the brush trucks and the firemen could get down there. The reason we're asking about the abandonment is that what if they go down there and they come in and someone's leaving the end of the road, and here comes a big, you know, fire truck or brush truck, and the people can't, are not familiar with it, and they can't back up, and here we've got an emergency vehicle coming down in there. But they will be able to go down there. It's very steep, and you're right, it falls right off, but we've had people stand there for that.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
My name is Emma Jackson, and I live at the end of Split Railroad, which shares Elliot Creek Road. The Witts are my neighbors across the creek, and I believe when I first moved to this area, I went to the highway department, and they told me that the old Elliot Creek Road had been abandoned, had been closed, which is the first step to abandonment. So I want to tell you also that the highway department, in the 15 years that I have been there, has never come to do anything to help clean up after flooding, which we are quite low. We have never seen anyone do anything to maintain, supervise, inspect anything in the roadway and the roadbed. And I encourage you to do this because I understand we're on the farthest east point of Elliot Creek and their property. Encourage you, please do this, because it is extremely annoying to the neighbors. We have strangers coming, coming in the driveway and saying, "We just wanted to see what was down here." We have big signs that say "private property." This is not an area where people need to just drive around willy-nilly because it's dangerous. They have to get in the waterway, in the creek bank itself, and please, please take this under consideration seriously. All of us down there would like to see this happen. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board?
My name is David Beasley. I live on Mount Pleasant Road in Charlesville, and I'm here to ask the board for some help. About a year and a half ago.
Are you, for this public hearing or a public address?
It's a public address. I'm listed for it. Is that next?
Yeah.
Shut the gap. I'll be back.
We'll be here.
I'd just like to make one comment. I know a couple of us board members had a little tour of that road, and I was one of them, and I went out there last Friday, and I'm not going to be here to vote, I'm afraid, but after seeing that road and listening to the Witts and taking a little, almost falling off the edge of the road by a big rock that nobody could move, I said, "Well, this was their private property to me," you know, and I can't speak for the board, but I'll just speak for myself, and I would definitely support this effort. So if there's nobody else, no other comments?
Thank you. I'll lead off. I'd like to share with the board a lot more information. My name is Marion Cap. I own property 2602 and 2732 Insured Grove Road, consisting in total of 88 acres. My, a corner of my property was shown on that map. I'm going to just try to speed through things here because it is a lot of material, but a couple of rebuttal comments I'd like to make since this isn't a hearing. This is a long-time historic road that has been, the creek board has been part of the public driveway for a very long time, so it could possibly be considered a historic road, and a part of what I would like to pass out to the board, I'm a strict man. If you don't mind just passing these around. I'd like to bring your attention to the Virginia Code section, and I'm glad earlier it was clarified that, and I would like it to be on the record, that this is a petition by one private party to take away a public road for their own private use. This public road in the maps that you all see is a connector road historically from the communities of Allegheny to the community of Sugar Grove, formerly known as Harless, and included in there is particularly this tiny little history of Sugar Grove moving. But the connector road from Allegheny to Sugar Grove to Rogers, which is noted on the map, to Lyer, and on through to the Hawasies area. Being a connector road and with transportation pressures in our county is, this needs to be viewed in the light of the future well-being of the county overall. Right now, all traffic, bottlenecks from Christiansburg, these guys, literally from that community, an average, I would say, seven and a half miles backwards, we go seven and a half miles toward my own personal commute, my office in Roanoke, just to get out of the Christiansburg boundary. That's 25 miles approximately per day to my commute, if I go five days a week or, you know, whatever an average person's commute to be. We are taking, this is an economic impact on the families and communities, not having this road to be connected. The road used to be connected by Falling Branch Road, throughout 640 on the maps. They've connected that, sorry, the picture's not up anymore, but that hairpin curve of the creek was connected and discontinued when Falling Branch Road was banned. There's a history in Montgomery County in the 40s and July 1st, 1944 specifically, and I would like to request the Board of Supervisors, four minutes, of why roads have been abandoned and isolated in this community. This is the last connector road. Petition, you see, has got the majority of the community signed the petition, and all those points about it. those points about its outlines and the respective time limit that I have, I'll just simply ask you to read it and give it much thought. In terms of the code of Virginia, the resolution for this meeting requested to have this hearing -- I borrow yours, Mr. McCann--
Sure.
-- so the clarification that this is a landowner petition is finally made, thank you. And I want to point to a couple of points that this historic four may be considered a landing and may need to have had a payment and a fiduciary's notification for this proceeding, as well as then go to the last line where it says on page one of the Virginia Code, 33.1151, that this governing body, you know, essentially making it no longer necessary for uses of secondary highway system may be made if the following conditions exist. There are four of them, and my interpretation would mean that essentially all four of them. It's in a residential district, this is not as agricultural and perhaps conservation. Population density is 1,000 per square mile. Internet data I showed said 215 per square mile in Montgomery County. Continued operations constitutes a threat to home safety and welfare. I dispute even that video. I think it's distorted. I wrote it in 1990 ponder myself this afternoon, simply did a three-point turn around the end and back myself. I have used this road for over 25 years in various modes of lawful transportation, walking, biking, and horseback riding. Many in the community continue to use this road. It is in continuous use, and if there's ever a public nuisance on a public road, simply call the law and report it. On Sugar Grove, you all may know, we do have some nuisance ATV activity going on on a public road, and they are not lawful on a public road. And I myself have called the Sheriff's Department many times. May I have lead for just another couple of minutes, please? Thank you. But all four conditions must be met and the condition see. I think that is a distortion. I have never seen litter on there, and a good way than once. I walk efficiently and pick up litter myself, but I have not seen the conditions that were described, and I have not had trouble when they themselves would come down on their farm vehicles, passing and walking my dog. I have not, you know, I just have not seen any problems on the road. And you saw that is by all of those many signatures you see, and there's another gentleman who has another one with more signatures. So there is a lot that really needs to be considered, but paramount is, does this meet the requirements of the Virginia Code? And the transportation pressures that we experience and cost two people -- and many people in -- I heard many of those voices commute to VA hospital, they're disabled veterans, there are people that go for chemotherapy or other treatments, and many people have family in the Allegheny Springs. I have two cemeteries on my two properties, one on either property that you could see there, and in fact, they're not even designated. One of them maybe, it is in my deed. But, you know, the question is, and the first point on that petition is, these are two distinct parcels of property. There's no telling when the Wits may sell the second farm that they acquired at two different times. Yes, indeed, they own two basic parcels of property, well, so do I, but the point is, unless an independent, light distraction is done by a professional to find all of the content of all of their -- there are lines of ways that people forget they have the cemeteries, but I tell the board to do their due diligence, and, you know, if that's what you need to do, but I am here to expose the laws of the road that's regular use in the community, and many people are calling for it to be reopened, and I am too, to make that board passable as it was, so that we can have emergency services come in. We have flooding problems, and swift water rescue capabilities reside in Salem, and Shawsville-Ellis County District has the mountain equipment that is able to get in, and it is a shorter route. So in the future, I'm again asking to look at the vision of the future, and I show you how it's connected because it's in the future. The Metropolitan Planning Organization already exists. We are going to have organized population and need all of our connector roads and need access to emergency services in this community, and we need that map. I have experienced and seen a couple of other forest fires in Sugar Grove, and these Craig's Mountain Roads are only one-way access in and out, and it is often impassable from ice and trees falling down, from storms and flooding events. So we ask that you keep this road open, and I also want to ask that you get opinions from all of your organizations, Metropolitan Planning, the Planning Department staff, City Planning Commission, Public Safety Director and staff, Emergency Services Commission, and the Tourism Director and Tourism Development Council. Because we are going to be putting money into that, and we have an actual greenway right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would wish to address the board? Come forward. Got two of you, maybe one.
And Jim, I might, since we've got Mr. Clark here at some point in time, maybe during this public hearing, I might ask for his input about what VDOT might want to do with this road.
If you will.
My name is Richard Rittenhouse. I live at 1612 Willis Hollow Road in Shawsville. Until early November, Willis Hollow Road where I live looked maybe a little bit worse than what we saw in the video there. It was, you could barely pass two cars. One car had to run off the road because of the July 3rd storm had just eroded our road so badly, and it hadn't been repaired until early November. We're really glad that Willis Hollow Road was not abandoned and that it was finally fixed. As a taxpayer, though, I object. I would object very strongly to seeing valuable public property conveyed to private individuals. I think that's something that the county maybe does perhaps a little too often, and here we're just doing a handoff of valuable property that if you wanted someday, if we wanted, if we, the people, another board of supervisors wanted someday in the future because of some future development, wanted that road to go through, it would cost millions of dollars to buy that property. It's valuable, and we own it right now. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Michael Abraham. I live in Blacksburg, 304 Royal Lane. I grew up here at Christiansburg. I've lived in Blacksburg for about 20 years now and have been in Montgomery County for most of my life. I'm interested, of course, in history and culture and, of course, politics, and wanted to address the committee tonight. Became interested in this because of my interest in historic preservation and land access. I understand that this hearing is being called to the provisions, Virginia Code 33.1-151, if that's correct, Marty? So I was just reading over this just to see what it said, and I want to talk about something an earlier speaker said. This abandonment may take place if the following conditions exist. There are four conditions, and it doesn't say if any of the following conditions exist, or if one of the following conditions exists, or if two or three. It says if the following conditions exist, which I assume to mean if all of the conditions exist. I'll go over them very quickly. The road is located within a residence district. Well, it's not, so that condition doesn't exist. The residence district is located within a county having a density of population exceeding 1,000 people per square mile. Well, this one doesn't, so it doesn't mean that condition. Continued operations section of road in question constitutes a threat to public safety and welfare. I don't know about that one. It's debatable, and I'm certainly not sure it's a consensus of that opinion. And D is alternate routes for other -- for use of abandoned of the road are rarely available, whether clearly not. And so, you know, we're failing on at least three out of four conditions, whereas four conditions need to be met. And I just don't quite understand that, and maybe I have the wrong impression about that, but maybe another speaker or someone on the board can explain to me why I have that wrong, but it sure seems pretty clear to me. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? No, come on.
I'm Joel Donahue. I live at 2722 Twenty Trail Drive in Blacksburg, in Montgomery County, Lester's Gate section. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Virginia, as well as Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I'm also a member of the Planning Commission here in Montgomery County, but I speak as private individual at this point. And for all the reasons, Ms. Capp and Mr. Abrams, I would agree with those. I have concerns as a planning person type person that this is going to be contrary to our transportation planning section of our comprehensive plan, which is currently being rewritten and being suspended for approval next year. I think one of the problems here is in 1944, when Falling Branch Road was discontinued, it was to a regalia from Christiansburg to be discontinued, but in doing that, they got a section that basically broke and disconnected Elliot Creek Road, and I think that's a mistake. I think this road has served historical, and I will emphasize historical, because in this code that Mr. Abrams quoted from there, also saying historical issues have -- must be considered. This is a historical road between Allegheny Springs and Harless Community, which is the Sugar Grove community now, and Reiner and Rogers. I believe this road is a possible upgrade when we want to increase our transportation ops as the county grows, and because of one mistake, we could now possibly at some point have an eminent domain taking where we could actually get that gap filled again, and then these sections of road that are being proposed to ban would be nice to have. Again, like Mr. Abrams said, that's county infrastructure investment. I have not seen anything that indicates that this road is costing us significant dollars. I mean, the testimony so far is VDOT acting, but that aren't doing anything, so they're not charging us. I don't believe there's significant tax revenues that are going to be gained by abandoning these roads. Property surrounding them, rent taxes, the road acreage is small, but it would be a significant loss if at some point we wanted to open that area to more readily have access to Roanoke side toward the east and have abandoned this road and then have to try to establish a new right-of-way easement through that valley area. This is historically a road that has followed Elliot Creek all the way from Reiner down into Allegheny Springs into Shawsville and into the Roanoke River. I would urge you to vote against approving abandonment of this. There's too much at stake here. It's so easy to go now and ban it, and then so hard to get back later. And I think that figures both Mr. Ducks and Mr. Gabriel's budgetary considerations. There's no real savings in current budgetary costs, and there's a lot of long-term capital liability that we lose there. I haven't heard anyone testify from the Sheriff's Department on the amount of incidents that occurred there. I hear about vandalism and things like that from the public. That's the property owner's issues, and that is an issue that needs to be sought by our law enforcement folks, but I do not see any records of property damage, cars going off the road, costing fires down there, things like that that would be a public safety issue. We can agree that right now, the petition is in, if somebody goes down there and gets stuck, they're full, if they don't have the proper equipment, but I don't think that's a reason to abandon it. And I also agree with Mr. Abrams that the four conditions are not being met. That law was put in there for the reason that they do not want secondary roads abandoned lightly. We need to really have a serious reason for doing that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Tacey, Tacey is coming.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tacey Newell. I live at 425 Arrowhead Trail, Christiansburg, Craig's Mountain. I'm asking that this request be rejected or opposed. I think that maintaining the road does not equal a threat to public safety or welfare. I think not maintaining it creates a threat to public safety and welfare. This is a connector road. There are people that use it to commute, future planning. Alternate routes are not rarely available any longer. It's a public asset with value that should not be removed or changed. I think instead, VDOT should be challenged to do more adequate maintenance of this road, including where it affords the creeks. I'm one of these people that I do Sunday drives. I love this county and have a four-wheel vehicle, and if I can't get in someplace on a four-wheel vehicle, I might walk, I might have a bike on my back. I've gone cross-country with horses, and I try to know where the public roads are and where I'm allowed to go. I'm respectful of the property. I would not like to think that I could acquire land on either side of the road that ended in a cul-de-sac, and I could come and ask for it then to be closed off to the public. Where I live, there is water that attracts people to it. There is an adjacent park, and there are some people that abuse the public asset, and there are some people that leave litter, or we have to correct their behavior while they're on our property so that we don't get sued. This, to me, is kind of similar to a situation that we saw in Pulaski County a few years ago, where a person acquired land on both sides of the road and then asked that the county road be closed, and there were too many other public people that were using it as a public right-of-way, and that's what it is today. I would like the board to do more due diligence and reject this, keeping an eye more on the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newell.
Hi, I'm Greg Hale. I live at 510 East Main here in Christiansburg, on a 100-acre farm at the end of Freeman Lane. Y'all in the department even know where that is. It's very close to this road, and I have problems too. My dead ends front of my property, and I have people coming in violating it. And I understand, if I owned this property on both sides of the road, I would want it closed. That would be very selfish of me as a taxpayer and a -- living here in the county. I would request that you deny it because I use that road for recreation. I think it should be advertised as a greenway. That's the kind of things that make this community desirable for people moving in from cities and things because we have these kind of facilities. And I'd like to see it used that way. Again, I ask that you reject this. Thank you.
My name is Susan Gray, and I live at -- I live on Sugar Grove Road in Christiansburg. I just want to ask for your support with regards to the Dotsons' request to have this road closed. The reality of the situation is, if you were in Shawsville or Allegheny Springs and you tried to come into Sugar Grove Road along this road, it's next to impossible. There was a high-speed chase several years back where Trooper Diamond was in an accident down in Sugar Grove, and the county deputies chased this person through the Seven Creek crossings, which goes from Sugar Grove Road up through Rogers. It destroyed Trooper Diamond's car. It also completely demolished Matt Wilburn's car. There are huge monstrous rocks in this. Getting those roads open and usable will be next to impossible and so expensive. It is dangerous down there, and I urge you to really go over in your mind the video that Ms. Dotson presented to you tonight, and I think it would be a wise move. I really do. I don't think anything in the future -- people don't go to the VA hospital through Shawsville and Allegheny Springs. That's the reality of the situation, and they won't. It's just too dangerous and too expensive. You can't get in and out of there. So I urge you to, again, listen to what Ms. Dotson said and relive that video in your mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Judy Ragels. I live at 1321 Craig's Mountain Road, and I moved there in 2004, and I did not know the community. I moved up here from southwest tip of Virginia. I'm a Marylander, but Virginia is my home. And one of the reasons I love this state now is because of the historic value. We want to stay in Craig's Mountain community. And the very first weekend I moved in, not knowing where my road led, I drove from my home all the way down Craig's Mountain Road, all the way down Sugar Grove, all the way to Allegheny Springs Road. And I was just delighted. It is a beautiful greenway, and I just cannot stand the thought of losing that to our public views. My children both have used it for recreational purposes when they were going to Christiansburg High School. One son is a cross-country runner and has often run down there. My other son is a bicyclist and, or cyclist, and has used that road often. And I found it very easily passable back in 2004, which was the last time I was able to go through there. And I am not a backwoods driver, and I thought the road was very worth keeping. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Clark, would you mind addressing the situation there? You know it much better than any of us.
Good evening. I'll answer any questions that you have. I don't really have an opinion as a highway department representative. We will work with you through the process. As you can saw in the video, it is a road that's, it's hard to maintain, but we have large trucks that are workhorses for road maintenance, and it's a very narrow road. We've done what maintenance we have deemed necessary as the priorities throughout the county dictate. Same guys that will maintain that road are also patching potholes on Route 11, 460, and so forth. So our work is constantly a matter of prioritizing what's needed most, and that's one of our lowest priorities because there's just not a lot of residents, not a lot of traffic. The decision to abandon the road is entirely the county's. The county has jurisdiction of the addition and deletion of secondary roads from the state system. So, again, I'll go through the process and answer any questions. One section has been discontinued through there. It used to go all the way to Allegheny Springs Road, I mean to, excuse me, to Mount Pleasant Road. We've got a section on the Mount Pleasant end, split rail. There's a middle section that has been discontinued. And of course, that's always another option. There are two ways of getting a road out of the state maintenance system, abandonment and discontinuance. Discontinuance simply removes it from the state system of highways, but the right for the public to use it remains. Abandonment extinguishes the public right of use, and of course, by that also takes it out of the state system.
Any?
Just a few, to bring it up to where you, a couple of things. There's a section appears on our map that is, would be, I guess it ends. And going beyond that would be trespassing. Is that correct?
No. The middle section was not abandoned. The middle section was discontinued. So the middle section where it hits the creek, that's the end of state maintenance, but it's not the end of public right-of-way.
Okay, so it was not discontinued?
It was discontinued. It was discontinued from state maintenance. The right-of-way was not abandoned.
Any, I know that we have probably, I guess, what's the wait time at this point in time of some of the projects that we've got matching funds for with VDOT just bought apart?
Oh, remember, we've got several, I mean, there's several years, plus the, I'm asked to sort of share, and we've got six-year plan money that's, we're still several years from even getting to probably City Church Road, which is the next one after Mount Pleasant.
Fair to say that that's got a lot more traffic than what this road would have?
Oh, yeah, but you're talking, you've got gravel roads in the county, including Brush Creek, Mount Pleasant. Yellow Sulfur's got over 200, roughly 250. You've got a lot on 180 vehicle per day range. This is less than 50, less than 40, less than 30 probably.
Thank you.
And that's the other thing, to use second, well, most of your secondary construction funds to upgrade a road, you would have to have over 50 vehicles a day anyway. So this would not qualify even for using unpaid road money. Most of your unpaid road money is being allocated, and that's just, you all, I'm told you just, you know, for several years, we've gone without any kind of secondary construction funds whatsoever. We are getting some more now because of the new transportation bill. You're getting secondary construction funds. You're getting unpaid road funds that is divided into two categories. One is for roads over 200 vehicles a day. That's the bulk of your secondary road construction unpaid road funds is going to over 200. You've got a smaller section, maybe half of that, quarter of that, that goes to roads over 50. If you wanted to use secondary construction funds on a road that has less than, unpaid road that has less than 50 vehicles a day, you probably have about $100,000 a year of discretionary funds that you could put on a road like that. And that's not going to touch anything like that. So I'm just trying to talk about improving. You know, we have secondary unpaid roads of varying width. Some are, you know, good wide roads. We have roads that like that one that are 10 feet wide. At best.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that just a little bit because I'm concerned about the forge of the creek down there. And what happens if someone just entered in the middle of that creek and you can't go forward or backwards? What would be the?
I don't believe any, on that section of road, now there's a section between 615 and 674. That's part of, around 675, I'm going to get you confused with all these route numbers, that fords it several times. This section, the Elliott Creek section, it ends at that ford. So we don't, the state maintenance ends at the ford. We don't have a lot of fords on this section of 675.
And why was that yet or not?
The county decided in, I don't know when it was, 91 maybe, to discontinue a section about four tenths of a mile long.
And what is the difference between one and the other, for discontinuance and?
Discontinuance means you are, that VDOT no longer maintains. It's no longer in the state system of secondary roads. However, the prescriptive easement, I guess we would call it because it was never a right-of-way, the right for the public to use that section still remains.
How long would it go between the time you last serviced that road and the time that you presume that sometime in the future you might would be back working on that road?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, I mean, is it all any kind of a set time that you, you know, you have to go to it or it becomes something else? I mean, is it 10 years, 20 years?
Not that I know of. I don't believe there's any, that may be a legal question.
No, I think what he's asking, what was the last time you worked on it? How much time generally goes by before you work on it again?
Oh, I mean, if you're just simply asking on a maintenance schedule, again, it's priority. You know, we're on Yellow Sulfur Road several times a month because we get a lot of traffic. Well, I don't know, we may, we may not maintain Elliott Creek unless we get a call about it. But are you asking?
That's what I want to, how long has it been since, since you last serviced the road?
I have no idea.
Is there any way of finding that out?
No, not really. We don't charge, we have to look back to something, you know, we used to be able to look and see because we had to charge our materials and time to a system that identified a road by route. Now we don't do that anymore.
So we really, there's no way of knowing when it was last?
Other than I could ask the maintenance superintendent if he might recall, yeah, last year I sent, we sent a grader down there to push a rock out or something like that.
Yeah, I'd like to have that tonight. I'd like to know, you know, what is the serviceability of?
My guess, we might send one down a time or two a year, my guess, if that.
When I was on that road the other day, there was a big rock. And we're in a pickup truck, and you got inches, you know, to get by that rock. They cannot do anything with that rock, as I understand it, because it's on a state road. I said, well, why don't you just put a stick of dynamite in it and blow it up? You know, you're not going to get a, you might get a tractor down there to move it. But is that true, they can't do anything with the road?
That, again, that may be a legal question. We don't own any of that property. That's all prescriptive easement. We just have an easement to maintain a road. So, but we also require permits, require permits on VDOT right-of-way. I don't know that we would require a permit from somebody to do any kind of work on property that they're, that they own and are probably paying taxes on.
Well, this is on the road itself.
I know. But it's not, it's not a VDOT-owned road. We just have an easement to maintain a road.
It is not a VDOT-owned road.
No, it's owned by the adjoining owners.
Like most of the unpaid roads in Montgomery County. Almost all of them, I would say.
Yeah, my road, my property language is in the middle of the road.
Yeah. We just have an easement to maintain a road, maintain a road. And what happens when we upgrade to paved road, we will go in and usually it's donated. We get a donated right-of-way so that most of our paved roads, it's VDOT-owned right-of-way because we have either been donated that road or we, that property, we bought it. But I would say almost all of your unpaid roads in the county are not owned by VDOT. It's not a right-of-way. It's just an easement road. Which wants to maintain a road, just like the power company has an easement to come and maintain the part of their own.
If it's owned by the people who have both sides of it, does that not put them into a different legal?
Well, what it means is if you close it, you can't sell it. It, what it reverts to the public right, it then goes by law to the adjoining owner. And so there is no value to the public, like was stated by one of the speakers. It's actually owned by the, by the private property owners. At some point in time, a public prescription easement was, was developed or granted or over time, and it's like the old verb.
Exactly. What happened, yeah, in 1932, VDOT just assumed maintenance responsibilities for all county roads. This is one of them. So this really existed. Who knows how long?
Over time, yeah. You'd have to do a detailed title history.
So someone owns that and they're paying taxes on it?
Well, I'd say the owner is probably the adjoining owner. There's only one, and so she or.
So if that's the case, you know, what rights does an owner of property have?
Their rights are subject to what the public rights are. And right now, the public rights are to use that right-of-way.
There's a 30-foot strip of public right-of-way through there.
So their rights are subject to, their rights, they can't, they don't have any rights that would conflict with the public rights to use that road, like they can't block it. But I think they could probably remove rocks.
Exactly, yes. Such as somebody's been doing this, I don't think it would be, it's been down there pushing trees out of the road and rocks out of the road if it's by the property owners.
So they don't really own it?
No, they own the underlying fee, subject to, just like an AEP easement.
Right, you can't plant a tree under power grid.
But your rights are subject to those easement rights are. Well, the property owner's rights are subject to whatever the public rights are to use that road. As a road, they can't use it for any other road.
Does the public, in turn, help pay the taxes on?
No, no.
Why not? They have the same rights that a person that owns it have. By one thing, you know, what's the difference?
Well, the, the, well, just like AEP wouldn't pay, pay your taxes on an easement, but it does affect the value of the land.
But they ain't paid for the right-of-way to get into land, I would imagine. VDOT did.
That's prescriptive easement.
It's kind of a legal quandary. And I don't know the answer. I'm curious to find out.
I had it. Once you put a part of a road in discontinuance or whatever, our whole road, what does that actually mean? Is that like forever, or is that for a certain period of time, or is that for when someone wants to bring it back out of that? I mean, what does that mean?
If it's discontinued, well, discontinued or abandoned, at that point, doesn't make much difference. If you want to bring it back, it would have to come back, you could only bring it back under current standards. You could only accept it under what our current standards are for maintenance. So we would have to, we would want 40 feet of right-of-way, yeah?
We're digging a big hole here.
So it really doesn't qualify to bring back the discontinuance? You'd have to spend a great deal of money to do that.
If you wanted to, if you wanted it to be a VDOT-maintained road, it would have to come in, back into the VDOT system to current standards.
And that would have to be paid for by the, either the owner of it
Or the taxpayer.
Or the general public.
Right, yeah, you'd have, yeah, you'd be using, you have to use secondary construction money to bring it back up to standards before we'd accept it back.
You need to have to buy a right-of-way because there's only 10 feet.
There's how many feet?
He was saying 10. I'm not sure.
I'm just saying how much the roadway is. Right now, there's, there's no, probably 40 to, 40 to 50 feet of right-of-way, plus construction easements.
Yeah, it would take more than they got now, for sure. It would take more than their turnaround is now, all the way up the whole thing to get it done.
That would be to bring a discontinued road back or abandoned road back into the state system. Discontinued, the public right to use it is still there. It's just not VDOT-maintained.
Help me. Is it the part that's the horseshoe up there? Is that what we're talking about at the top of the map?
That's the creek.
That's the creek?
Yeah.
But there is a road around there?
The yellow part is the road.
Right.
And right now, the state maintained part ends where the yellow line ends, which is where it goes into the creek. Beyond the creek, it has been discontinued for about four tenths of a mile to where it hits Split Rail Road, which comes out on Mount Pleasant.
So to bring that back, you would have to get 40-foot wide, bring it up to state standards for that section that's abandoned?
The section that's discontinued, the section in the center that's discontinued, if you wanted to bring that back into the system to complete the connection between?
That's what I was asking. That's what I was trying to get at, like, as part of it was already in that manner.
Yes. And you'd have a section of four tenths in the middle that's the current standards in the middle of two ends that are.
You can't get to, yeah. VDOT has a 10-foot right-of-way now?
We have a 30-foot prescriptive easement. It looks to me like we have about a 10-foot wide road on a 30-foot easement.
Okay, okay. So going down that road here, the bank on the side, when you do, when you have the prescriptive easement, what right does the public have? Do they have the right of the whole 30 feet? Or just, you know what I'm saying? I mean, people are coming on this property. All right? And to not be trespassing?
Yes, you have 30 feet. The public has 30, as, again, I'm thinking that's right.
30 feet, and it's going to go through the center line.
Yeah, 15 feet generally.
15 feet each way.
And so it may do this based on how the road's over time has developed.
Okay, it's clear as mud.
It all has to come off of one side because you can't.
I can't do it the other way. Unless you build it up. Yeah. Okay.
So, yeah, there's a 30-foot strip that's for public use. I guess for public use, you have to VDOT to maintain.
So on both sides?
15 feet from the center of the road.
15 from the center.
Yeah.
Then one other question.
I know what we got. We got a man.
Okay. That means that, that little bit of section, little bit of width right now, is grandfathered in, right? To, to the system?
No, not.
Isn't that grandfathered in?
It's, it's a, VDOT maintains about 1.1, 1.2 miles of 675.
Okay.
And we maintain about seven tenths on the Mount Pleasant side. And there's a section in the center that we do not maintain. So notice that a road exists between Craig's Mountain Road and Mount Pleasant Road.
And you got across the creek the one time to get there?
VDOT maintains all but four tenths in the center. VDOT maintains all but four tenths of the center.
And all of it belongs to the property owner.
The fee.
VDOT owns none of that roadway. VDOT has a prescriptive easement to maintain one point two miles on one end and seven tenths on another end. Public's rights exist all the way through, right now. We just don't maintain the center part, center four tenths.
Okay. That's what I was asking, that, that center part.
Yeah. Center part was discontinued, not abandoned, was discontinued, I think in the early nineties.
Oh, that was meant to discontinue?
You're saying to the government, the discontinued side, it would have to be your left, and which is not intended for a right-of-way.
Right.
Yeah, it's not economically feasible.
In other words, we have all the ten-foot wide roads we can handle right now, we're not bringing in any more that we don't maintain.
Yeah, we got lots of them.
But again, that's just VDOT maintenance. Like I said, the public's right right now exists between six seventy-four and, and Mount Pleasant, six thirty-nine. It's a thirty-foot easement all the way through, that the public has a right to use. VDOT just doesn't maintain the middle section because that was discontinued. Again, I can't remember the date. I'm getting it mixed up with another road, I think.
But you go get us a date of last time y'all were used that?
I can, I can get it, yes, I'll ask our superintendent the last time he took a grater down there, or-
Six thirty.
Had him cut some brush out of it.
I, I'm just, I'm really curious on that.
All right. It's just been recommended by our current administrator that we might have a future work session on this before we make a decision and get all the information we need and questions and-
We definitely need some information.
Questions in mind.
Okay, we can do it.
Chairman Lightfoot, you have a good thought. I actually want to mention, I would like to cross add my note and ask a question now.
I can't even-
Can you speak again? Yeah, he needs to speak again. Need to come to the mic so we can hear him.
Thank you, David.
Appreciate, appreciate it. Couple things, I happen to have quite a bit of experience in prescriptive easements. That's what should be abandoned, okay? That's a right we have. In the nineteen, up until the Bird Act, roads were maintained by farmers. You had an obligation in the nineteenth century, if you owned land, farm order fifteen feet on the side of fence line, fence line, fence back, road goes through along the property line, your fence is about fifteen feet back from your fence line. Farmers were actually required, Mr. Creed, to use their own labor and materials to maintain a section of road that belonged to their property. We got out of that with the, eventually the automobile, Operation Bird Act, Formation of VDOTs, okay? That's when prescriptive easements came up. The county has a right to maintain roads, but as part of the Bird Act, what would happen to county roads is generally counties, all of them in Virginia, I think it's come from one, two, is it now? Right. Allowed VDOT to maintain their roads. That's why you do what you do with the six-year plan, things like that. You own prescriptive easements. VDOT, in some cases, when they have a rear road like four sixty, the primary road, things like that, they buy the land, they own it. But generally in secondary road system, the county has prescriptive easements from property owners. Those are valuable rights, as Martin told you. Okay? Now, people still have a right, when it's a secondary road that's minimally maintained by VDOT, not paved, to go and maintain that road if they need to. What they do not have a right to do is interfere with easement. So, if this road has been discontinued in that four, four mile section, that means, for you legal types, that if somebody was out there and crashed their car, that counts to the county because the county has not approved that as a continued road. However, somebody could go against the county or VDOT for maintenance on a road that's still in the system, a three-word, three-word system. That said, so if somebody goes out that road, then goes on the creek, goes in that section that's been discontinued, the county has no liability. Because basically, the county said, we're not maintaining the road, you go use the road, get stuck, you're a fool, tough, deal with it. Now, but on the other side of that, it means that if that's a prescriptive easement that's been discontinued for your own use, that's what discontinue means, discontinued as a road, not as a public way. Public ways include walking, biking, hiking, skating, and horseback riding, to name most of them, but there are others. That means, and I've, what I've heard, is some fences were put up. And if there are fences existing on that, blocking that public way to prevent and discourage people from using that as a public way, those fences are violating easement. And easement means the property owner has to continue to ease that way and not do anything. They are a violation of the prescriptive easement if they block that easement, if they put boulders on it, if they build it such a way that they have a special vehicle where they can use it, but the average vehicle cannot, they are not maintaining that easement. And that's what the county has a right to. That's what the people of the county, because there is really no county, what Craig believes is a bunch of people who help service the citizens of the county. But the citizens of this county own those prescriptive easements. So, I would like to go back on the record, warning that if there are impediments in that roadway between Sugar Creek or Sugar Grove and the other end, seventy-four, that seven four tenths a mile, those need to, those legally need to come down. If they're prohibiting people from, from crossing those, people cannot complain, or Jason and I noticed that they may own the land under the prescriptive easement, by rules of the prescriptive easement, they're violating laws if they're doing any impede traffic there.
Let me ask you a question. Let me ask you a question, then. How do, uh... How do we get VDOT to go down and move that property?
You have to convince them, put it on a priority list, and find the funds to do it. But if it's blocking the homeowners, they have a right, as homeowner, as property owners, to go move that rock so they can get in. They have a right to maintain their way in, but they also have a right, have an obligation not to block that way. In other words, they can, they can make a superhighway in there, but they cannot put it on use, but they cannot put gates across it.
But nobody says they're putting anything on their own use, or putting anything in the road.
Right, but if the rock is blocking-
There's no allegation and there's-
No, but if the rock is blocking traffic, so they have a problem, well, then they have every right to move it and make that road wider. Because certainly, they don't have to wait for VDOT to do it.
Well, if they can get by very carefully, they can, but somebody coming down and knocking on it may very well wreck.
Now, I'm not gonna speak as a lawyer here, but there is a possibility that that's where, if there was a hazard, that's where the county could be liable, and that's one of the two things that Attorney McMahon was stating, is one of the reasons that you could abandon it if there's a really, really, really a problem with, um, safety. And you don't want to benefit that ability.
I've been down the road to road, and I, I know it's, there is a problem with safety.
Right. But again, prescriptive easements are valuable thing, let's, let's move on. I'd like the idea of a work session, Mr. Chairman.
I want to close this public hearing, if I may, and we will have a work session on the agenda in the near future, I can't tell you when, but, uh...
Well, my suggestion would be to, to gather as much information we can, we'll have the county attorney advise us, or David, there you are. Certainly get as much information we, as we can from VDOT. Uh, we'll let the folks know when it's a work session on the board agenda, so if you want to have the opportunity to come and listen and speak, if that's an opportunity, we'll have that available for you as well.
Okay, and we'll now close that public hearing. The next, uh... Public hearing is a proposed ordinance authorizing the operation of golf carts and utility vehicles. And who's gonna speak to that, please?
We'll let Marty handle that one. Back there, Farnes, back there.
It's kind of weird meeting, and we've got two of these on, probably fifteen years without any of those. The county received a request by Warmheart to allow the operation of golf carts, uh, within the Warmheart Village. In specific, uh, they were asking for, uh, authorization to operate, um, golf carts on Litten Lane and Warmheart Drive within Warmheart Village. Under, uh, state law, it states that, um, that they can only operate golf carts or utility vehicles, which is one of the same, on public highways within the area of the county, unless the county first authorizes that, and we're talking about the unincorporated area, the towns would have jurisdiction within the two towns. And then there's certain requirements before they could even be, uh, have the opportunity to drive golf carts, like they cannot drive them on roads that are faster than twenty-five miles an hour posted speed. And then also, it, it's got to be consistent with the state local transportation plan or the statewide pedestrian policy, there's certain things you need to consider in making this determination. And I think Warmheart's here to speak on the request, and then, um, so it would take an ordinance, and we're not asking for approval tonight. And it would come back at a future meeting once you get the information. I believe Dan Roos submitted something as well, uh, for you to look at in the packet.
I'm Fern Michellea. I live at three hundred Howery Street in Christiansburg. I'm here on behalf of Warmheart Village. When I arrived tonight, I thought, wow, there was a lot of people interested in golf carts. But apparently not so much. Thank you for consideration of our request. There are three primary needs associated with the use of golf carts and other service vehicles on the state-maintained roadways at Warmheart Village. With the opening of our village center this past March, we are now in a position to transport Warmheart residents to and from events and activities and fitness programs at our village center from various facilities around Warmheart. And golf carts are a very convenient and energy-efficient way to do that. Secondly, our village center is now where our welcome center or marketing department is located, and we have the need to conduct tours of prospective residents and family members around the village from the village center. Again, golf carts are a very handy way to do those tours. And then, thirdly, we have a need for our maintenance and grounds crew members to service the village center, um, driving golf carts and other utility-type vehicles. So, those are our needs. Uh, the speed limit throughout Warmheart Village is twenty-five miles per hour, so I, I think we're, we're okay there, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? No question?
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anybody?
If I could have one more thing, then, like, if you look at the ordinance that would authorize them to use these, it, it states that, um, since Warmheart is asking for this, that they be responsible for the installation and continued maintenance of any signs, what you're supposed to put are signs notifying the public within those right-of-way that golf carts or other utilities may be using that. And so, since they're out there more than county would be, or county personnel, uh, the, the code allows the county, within the ordinance authorizing it, that they ask the operator to maintain the signs and put those signs up. So, that's, that's in the ordinance as well, if the board should, should find that as suitable. Cost probably not much.
And they plan to maintain signs, right?
I'm sorry?
They plan to maintain this, maintain signs, okay.
All right, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address this public hearing? Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. The next public hearing, number three, is a proposed convenience of a twenty-foot stormwater management easement. And who's gonna address that, please?
I'll just start it, and then I think the applicant's here who's, who's making the request, uh, this, this came up at the last board meeting when we asked the board to actually schedule this public hearing. Uh, this request came through the school board, uh, because it, it involves school property, the, uh, Christiansburg Middle School property. Uh, we are the owner, but the schools are in charge of the property and maintain it, and, uh, and they have no problem with the request, uh, and so they forwarded to us, seeking the board's approval. Before you can buy any property, either easements, uh, or a fee, you have to hold a public hearing, and that's the purpose of this hearing. And so, I think the applicant requesting the easement is here to talk about it, and then, uh, I believe schools may have somebody here as well. Yeah, there's, because there were some questions when we, when we scheduled the public hearing about maybe the impact on the schools' pond that this water be draining into, and he can address that. Mr. Buck.
Okay. Any questions? Ma'am, come forward, please. Say your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Brian Rollies from, uh, and I live at ten seventy-five Casalt Lane in Christiansburg, Virginia. Uh, I am the owner of D and B Storage, and I'll be glad to answer any questions or concerns that they may have about this easement. John Neal with Gay and Neal Engineering, who's the project engineer, and he's available also if there are any technical questions that, uh, be over my head. Uh, as part of my development, I'll be building, uh, an enhanced extended detention pond on my property, uh, and the Feature Homeowners Association will maintain the pond in perpetuity. Uh, the purpose of the easement is for pipes we will place underground to carry the water directly to the pond behind the school system, or behind the middle school, after it leaves my facility. Uh, the school system has stated that the easement will not adversely affect, uh, the school property, and at the school board meeting, they requested that I perform this work, if possible, over the holiday break to minimize any disruption to the students. Therefore, I'd like to ask respectfully, uh, the board to vote on this matter tonight, allow the work to proceed over the Christmas break. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Okay, any questions in the board?
I will, I will mention that, that I am actually building a pond, um, on my property that will, will capture and gather the, the stormwater, um, and by slowing it down, and it'll actually clean it, so the waters leave my property will actually be, be a slower volume and cleaner than it was before. And, uh, the easement is, is for a pipe to carry the water to the, the existing ponds behind the school.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. And is there anybody in the, uh, audience who would like to address the board on this public hearing? Come forward, please, and you have five minutes.
Joel Donahue, twenty-two, twenty-two, Money Trail Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia, Fluster Skate Area County, just want to support Mr. Rice's application. As he said, he's currently got a drainage situation, his property drains under the school already, and sheet flow, all they're gonna do is put that in a pipe, and need an easement for that. And like you said, it's gonna improve the situation, not adding more water. Shouldn't be a factor of safety to kids, if anything, anything, it should actually, by putting in a pipe, less sheet flow, there'd be a plus chance of muddy, slippery areas, the total, the total surface area effective will go down.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board on this? Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, at this point in time, we, we want to go ahead, under our new rules, and add this to an addendum that we would be voting on, uh, at a later time, but voting on tonight.
Board all right with that?
I think it's probably best, really, in order to get it done where the school wants it.
Right, right, yeah. Certainly can be added.
Do you have to do that now, or do we have to wait till we reach new business?
I think you can do it now by adding it to new business.
Add it to new business, yeah.
So, I guess at, at this point in time, I would move to, to add as an addendum to new business, to vote on it this evening, since there's no negative responses.
Second.
Moving second, and any further discussion? Real call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gay and Neal?
Aye.
Chairman Wallace?
Aye.
Settles.
All right. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a proposed ordinance amending the joint tourism agreement.
And I'll take that one. Under tab D in your packet, you have the bylaws for the Tourism Development Council, as well as an organizational cooperative agreement between the county and the towns of Blacksburg and Christiansburg, um, creating the joint tourism program. As we've now been operating this program for a little over a year, uh, there's a couple of things that needed to be tweaked, if you will, in the, in the agreement. Uh, one relates to how, um, members of the Tourism Development, uh, Council are appointed. Right now, it requires, um, a joint appointment by the boards, by the board of supervisors, town council, the two-town councils, and that really creates some real challenges sometimes when we're trying to get 21 folks to vote on appointments. So what we're recommending is that change be made to allow the two-town managers and the county administrator to recommend to the elected bodies who was appointed, and let you handle it that way. The other significant change is language that was added to the cooperative agreement, which basically calls for a true-up, if you will, each year of the funding. There was no language in the document that talked about at the end of each fiscal year, how we would true-up the funds to make sure that everybody had contributed their appropriate shares. We added a paragraph to that, and that is added under Section 3, Paragraph C, 2. And those are the only changes of note to the documents, but because it was adopted by resolution, excuse me, by ordinance, we need to have a public hearing to gather any comment on those changes before we present them to you for a vote.
Any discussion or questions to the board? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing. The next item on the agenda is public address, and we have David Beasley signed up for public address, and sorry it took so long to get here.
I told you I was back.
Didn't know it'd be tomorrow, right?
All right, guys, I'm David Beasley, I live in Mount Pleasant Road in Christiansburg, Charlottesville, top Christiansburg mountain area. I'm here to ask some help in a problem I'm having. We have a company, LAS Construction, which is a local excavator that has land down Mount Pleasant, about two and a half miles down there, past 70 residences. Mount Pleasant is a small, curvy road, unmarked, no speed limit on it, that ends in about one mile, straight down 6% grade, to this site where LAS Construction owns property across. And the site is basically a field, I mean, not field, but a drainage area, between two ridges. It's about 40 foot deep, about 200 feet wide, and about 300 feet long. It's like three-foot-long field. They started fielding it about a year and a half ago, and for about a year, we let them do it. They would do 24 hours a day, run 15 tons of trucks down the road, 24 hours a day, Sundays a week, Sunday, Saturday, you know, through a rural area, past these residences. Creates incredible noise, vibrates the houses. And so if I went to the county, asked Mr. Gay to look into this, see if they were legal, they found out they didn't have a permit, he required them to have a permit. We talked to Mr. Creed about it, asking if there's anything he could do. Unfortunately, there's a 10,000-square-foot loophole here, that if you only fill 10,000 square feet at a time, you can get a permit without going for a public hearing. You just put up a little stormwater fence, get your permit, and start filling in. What you're supposed to do is, it was designed so if people are filling small areas could do this without going through a large bunch of paperwork. What they're doing is they're filling in 10,000 square feet, if not more. It doesn't say how deep it can be, it just says 10,000 square feet. So they're filling 40 foot deep, they're going at 10,000 square feet, you know, and then basically tying right onto that, going 10,000 more, 10,000 more, and 10,000 more. It's pretty obviously a commercial dump site. The company's an excavating company, they're taking field from Blacksburg, a new apartment complex there. For instance, right now, even tonight, as I came, the trucks were still running. They do, average between 50 and 70 trucks a day, down this curvy road, you know, and I mean, it's dangerous for the residents, it's incredibly noisy, and it disturbs the peace really a lot. But we tried the police department, it's not creating enough noise to violate the ordinance, and we finally got them to stop dumping after 11 o'clock at night, because they were violating the noise ordinance at that time. We've checked with the county, the county says there's nothing they can do. As you know, we don't have a field engineer at this time. Mr. Bonner, when he retired, they never filled his position, so they put it on Mr. Gay to do work. He's a great building inspector, but, you know, I've done this quite a bit myself, and I understand that the reason for that field permit is to keep you from doing something like this. And since there's nobody really qualified to look into it, to see this problem, Mr. Gay says, well, they're going by their permit, there's nothing I can do about it. But there is something that can be done about it. The fact is, I think it's an illegal field. I think that it's been going on for over a year and a half now, and the LAS company has now asked for more permits on that land, separate areas, to fill more. I'm asking the board to step in here and help us out, and look into this permit. If nothing else, limit it to a reasonable amount of trucks per day, say five or six trucks per day, and then, any other future permits require a public hearing, so you can understand what's going on, rather than just getting by with permit and going and feeling how they want to. I believe if we look into it strongly, we can find that they're using a commercial endeavor on private land to fill the pond. So I'm asking you to vote for that.
Okay.
Any questions?
We don't respond in the public address?
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll take notes.
I'm making a summary. He's not getting them all down, we're getting quite a few of them down through McCoy, those trucks.
Is this where they're doing the thing on the mailman?
No, these are coming from Blacksburg, yeah, they're black trucks, they lay ass on them, two or three at a time.
All right.
Mr. Chair, vice chair, county administrator, supervisor, good to see you again. I told supervisor Biggs I was going to praise you all to start with, before I talk about anything. First salute, our outgoing chair, and we're losing another fine gentleman over here that I don't know what we've done with, over the years, what we've done with him, so personally, I want to say thank you for what you've done for the county. 1477 Mary Back Road, supervisor Brown's been down, and I know, we've been a long time trying to get that full road paved, and we finally got it to share. I thank V-Doc personally, and the road is probably the smoothest in the county, and it's one of the most high-traffic because of the shortcut. I live right in the middle. The smooth road is creating several problems. I praise the sheriff's department and the Virginia State Police, if they're running road checks and the speed radar right now, in my driveway, because my driveway ends at 35 mile an hour speed. We'll be getting a petition here shortly for a speed study, and we will be petitioning for possibly 35 or 45 for the rest, and all the way to Price's Ford Road, because it's unbelievable. If you come down that road, once you get out of the 35, they're flying, and that includes the bicyclists. And the speed bicycles, they did extend the road out, V-Doc did a very good job. Bicyclists could be on the side of the road, but they won't use it on that road, because it's so smooth. And one of the sheriff's deputies estimated, there was a bicycle doing 30 miles an hour speed bike the other day. So the speed bikes, we've been very lucky, there's not been any accidents. So there's two things to put in your mind, that change in the speed limit coming up with the petition, and the possibly look at expanding the shoulders even more to allow the bicycle traffic, because it's being used more, and hopefully we can get a bicycle count, too, during that speed study. The other thing I want to bring to your attention, Chris, and do it right away, I've spent time, of course, you know, I've 28 years watching this county grow and change, and watching this board change its matters. My poor eagle, I was on that construction site the other day, and it's getting very close to being damaged by your construction. What I would like for you to look at, number one, is still looking at some money to repair it, but also some type of protection, where it's a cage on the eagle, or it be taken down during construction. And I'm not the only one that's worried about this. A lot of the historical society people, we've been watching it. That eagle is one of the biggest parts of this history of this, of county, and we need to protect it. Not only save it, preserve it, but we need to protect it during this construction. And I'm really worried, the other day, they were swinging around with a boom from one of the cranes that they were moving stuff around with, and it came very close to hitting it. That eagle cannot sustain any more damage before we get it preserved and fixed. So I would ask that you look at that, Brad, please, you know, maybe look at the facility people, and Steve, and what could possibly be done to protect it. If it has to be taken down, let's take it down, and that would be a good time. And once we take it down to protect it, what you could do to preserve it, and how much it's going to cost to preserve. I mean, you know, Chris, we've talked about putting some money in it, or using some of that extra money, you don't know how much it's going to cost. So I think now's the time, as we go into the first of the year, especially with, you know, some of the members in the board, and that construction continues into the first of the year, we need to protect that eagle. And if that means taking it down, protecting it, and seeing how much it will cost, whether it's $500, or whether it's $100,000, we don't know, but we need to take it down, and now's the time, I believe, to get an expert to look at it and to tell us what can be done to save it. Then we can figure out where we're going to put it back on that spot, if it's okay and preserved, or we might be able to put it back into where it's supposed to be in the new courthouse, and I'm still pushing for that. I see the architect many times, and I ask, can we remove those windows? We were told, oh, no, that'd be too much trouble. He said, that wouldn't be any trouble, we can remove a window and lower the eagle in where it's supposed to be, on some type of base. But the key thing right now is we must preserve it during this construction, and I'm afraid it's going to get damaged by even an accident, something falling from the top of the scaffold, you know, as the work continues. I mean, we've got to preserve our history. Thanks.
Thank you, Marty. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board at this public Seeing no one, we will close this public address. All right, the next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull the mainspring screen dock site from consent agenda.
Okay.
And I'll move that we accept the rest of the consent agenda.
Pardon?
And I'll move that we accept the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
And moving seconded, roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Now, on this, Marty, would...
I would then go to new business.
New business?
Yes.
Okay. And do I do my addendums first, or follow?
I would, I, if I may, I would suggest following the agenda and then adding the new business. I know Mr. Hagan and Mr. Rutledge have been waiting for a while, and they're the first item under new business, so.
All right, that's fine. Now we're in new business. First item is Subject A, Real Estate Agreement, Shaw Development LLC, expansion of the Motor Mile Park. Do I have a motion?
Moved. Second.
And moved and seconded, and any discussion?
This is good for the county.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gay?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Subject B is acceptance of the donation of property from Shaw Development LLC for the expansion of the county's Motor Mile Park. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded, and any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
And Subject C is capital reserve transfer for Motor Mile Land Purchase. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded, and any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
The next item is Subject E, and that is...
D.
I'm sorry, D.
Yeah, personal problems.
And that is revision of the county's personnel policy and procedures. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
And moved and seconded, and any discussion?
Can I just ask a quick question of Mr. Meadows? Could you just explain the process or the thought behind these particular changes? What led to these?
Most of these changes are to bring our personnel policies in compliance with regulations that have been adopted over the last year or so. I believe that's primarily all of them, is to bring our regulation, our policy and procedures into compliance with federal regs and other things that have been adopted over the last year or so.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gay?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
All right, now, Subject E is county capital projects. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And moved and seconded, and any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed, could you please... I was just going to quickly say that this is to set aside these funds for future capital projects. This does not obligate the funds to any specific project. You'll have to come back later and address that, once projects are identified and presented to you.
Sorry about that.
No, that's all right. You were moving so fast, I didn't want to slow you down.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Subject F is school capital projects. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded, any comments?
Just same general comment, Mr. Chair, is, again, this is setting these funds aside for future school capital projects. It is not setting them aside for any specific capital project. Those will be identified and brought back to you for your approval later.
And it's not allocating these funds to the school board?
No, it's basically, you're marking those funds on the county's balance sheet for future school projects. It's not giving that money to the schools for any specific project.
Okay.
I don't want to start a long conversation, been here for a while already, but, you know, I'm wondering, especially given, you know, the joint meeting that we just had with the school board, and the fact that they presented us once again with their study about the needs, the ongoing maintenance needs of the school division, and roughly $2 million per year over the next five, or 10 years, actually, and I'm wondering if some of this money might be better spent going towards those ongoing maintenance needs. I mean, it's wonderful to plan for the future, but, you know, we, first thing, when you think about is keeping up what we have, you know, so we don't have to build a new school, hopefully, too soon or anything like that. And I don't, you know, if there's another way to do that, then that's fine, but, you know, here's $3 million that we're moving to future use, when, you know, maybe we have more pressing needs right now. Okay, Chris? Well, and I understand that aspect of it, but they did just have the $239,000 rollover money, and they didn't use any of that for any type of maintenance, despite the fact that they had listed certain areas as being critical. And so that, in the back of my mind, and it's not that we couldn't shift this over at some point in time, if they came to us with a critical need, let's say the boiler goes out at some school, and they need the funds for it immediately, we could still allocate. But again, they hired employees with part of that money to, I think, there's a study and the like, without breaking it down. So I don't, while I understand that they've got a study that says it's got critical needs, that's not where they're putting their money. But, okay.
I'd like to say, before we allocate any of it, we found out, is it any surplus left in these construction funds? You know, the capital outlay that they had, if something's left in the Eastmont Elementary School, or Auburn, or whatever, that money be used first before we, because they'll let that lay there, if we give them that, and it's still laying there. But I like to see it used toward the pressing needs.
So are you saying this $3 million, you don't want to put it toward school capital projects? Is that what you're saying?
Now, if this $3 million is going, we are putting two cents away.
Yes.
And we had a little windfall, and that money will be put with that money, with that money that's already there. But instead of taking $3 million right now, giving it to the schools as their $2 million need, I would like to see us look at the surpluses that's left of all the capital projects that they've done, and if there's some money out there, use that money first, and then what's left over, we go back to the fund. Instead of giving them $2 million up front, and they may have, you know, $3 million land, I mean, $2 million land over from the Price's Fork School and Eastmont School or something.
I understand, I understand.
Can I ask a question of clarification, maybe, that might alleviate my concern? If this money is moved into the school capital projects, future school capital projects fund, is there anything to prohibit us from, if the schools come to us with a critical needs, boiler goes out or something like that, using that money to address a maintenance concern?
No, you're...
For existing structure.
You're not locking it away forever for capital. If the board decides that there's an urgent need and you want to take some of that capital money to address other needs, you can do that.
So as Mary said, it's capital is capital.
Yeah, that's what I, you know.
Okay.
It could be a capital maintenance need or a capital building need or a real falling in need.
That, I think, settles my concern for now.
It's board, it's a board designation, and so the board can re-designate it to whatever you want to use it for.
All right, may I ask a question? We can use it for whatever we want to, you're saying. All right, we put it in this school capital project.
Yes, ma'am.
But, you know, we've got an animal shelter out there we're working on, and take it back out of there and give it to the animal shelter.
If the board were to decide to do that, you can certainly do that, but that was also the reason that in the first...
We did the $2 million.
I know.
We did the $2 million.
I know.
But if the board, by designated the $3 million towards school capital, it just signals to staff and helps with planning to begin to think about how we're accounting for funds for future projects. It does not obligate the board in any way to spend it for school capital, because the only thing that obligates you is when we bring specific projects back and then you pass a resolution.
Okay. Can I also ask you a question about the public safety building?
Sure.
Are we covered on that building?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so we'll leave it as it is.
And I do think it's important to know how much is left in each one of those categories.
Bill, clarify, I want to make sure I know where you're at when you're on this situation. Are you saying at this point in time, you're not in favor of setting the $3 million aside for the school capital? Or are you just saying that you're okay with that, but you will wait to see before we allocate any of that money, just how much money is left after school construction?
That's what I'm saying.
He was answering my concern about not setting the, before we do, before we set anything aside for maintenance, we see what's in those.
Because we just found out there was $400,000 available to be addressed as security.
Security, that's right.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a resolution. Am I right?
Yes, resolution.
From Mayor Richard Ballenji.
Second.
Hmm?
So moved and seconded.
I said so moved.
Second.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
It's well, well deserving. We've had a, this board, since I've been on, has had an outstanding working relationship with the town of Christiansburg, and Mayor Ballenji has been a part of what's caused that to flourish the way it, the way it has.
Well, anyone up here in this seat is a board member on that night, but I do want to come when you present it. And I just want to let people know that my association with Mayor Ballenji has been excellent, and he's done a lot to work with us, as well as we've done a lot to work with them. And it's been a very, very good association over the years. So I'm glad the board is doing this, and I can still sign it, right?
Yes, sir. If it's adopted tonight, you're still the chair, yes, sir.
So any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
All right.
What I would suggest now, since we're down to the work session, is that you take up...
I'm going to break.
No, take up the item that, yeah, take up the item that was deferred off of consent agenda first.
Right.
And then we have the other, and then we have the one that was added for the real estate purchase and sale agreement, and then you've got the action for...
Can we do that action first since they're waiting and then they...
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, that sounds good. So the first one is Shaw.
Approval of...
The easement.
The easement for, I'll get there in a second. Approval of a 20-foot stormwater management easement across portion of Christiansburg Middle School for benefit...
Second.
And moved and seconded and any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, now, Mr. Gabriel?
Do you want, which one do you want to do first? The Alleahany Springs?
Yeah, the Springs.
Okay, I actually just really had a question, and this is, this is a transfer from the capital reserves for the Alleahany Springs Green Box site to make it into a consolidated site, is that correct? And I was just wondering if you could just give me a little more information on the breakdown of what that, how the $83,000 is being spent, or what it goes, what that specific amount is going towards.
Since Carol helped pull that together, I'm looking down at her, she might can give you a better idea.
There is a capital account in the county capital projects fund that contained a balance in it of about $30,000 some thousand dollars. Based on direction from this board, some of the funds that were gained from the sale of the Plum Creek, oh, Green Box site were added to that. So there is about $40,000, $42,000 in that account. That plus the $83,000 is what's going to cover the cost of the purchase of the land, a compactor. I never can do this wrong. Whatever I do, I do wrong. The compactor, four of the containers that are necessary, the fencing, there's some costs related to getting the survey done, it's about $3,800. All of those added together are what comprise the request for the $83,000.
So what was the cost of the land?
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand, okay. So the rest is going towards the actual material and the...
The actual material for the site. It does not, however, let me point out, include any of the staff costs at this point, because we weren't certain when it was going to go open and how close to the end of the fiscal year that would be. So you will see some additional funds requested depending upon what time the site is scheduled to open to cover the site attendant costs.
Okay, what, if we, if this were to pass tonight, then what would be the timeline roughly?
Well, we, we're working on the purchase agreement now for the property.
Okay.
So we have not, couple of weeks away from being able to close on that. We've got to get the survey. Once we close on the property, the equipment, the compactors and containers will be ordered right away, and we'll begin work on prepping the site.
Okay. Will there be costs associated with removing the old green boxes and...
I don't think, I don't think so. Those belong to the county, and they'll probably, to be candid, yeah, they'll probably be recycled because they're in pretty rough shape.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Moved and moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
No.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Six ayes, one minute.
All right, and the other one is the Price's Fork Elementary School property. Do I have a motion?
Move, move. Oh, sorry. Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Do you have any comments on that for the audience?
Uh, no.
Go ahead, Craig. Yeah, they're going to say, well, we're going to say...
I just want to note that we've been working for several months with a very interested developer on the site, Taylor Hollow Management LLC. And the board reviewed earlier this evening a draft agreement that has been moved for approval this evening. We are going to be releasing more information in the next day or so about the purchase, but we're very excited to be moving forward with the sale of another school property. And I know this is in Supervisor Brown's district, so...
Go ahead. You said, plenty.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, do we need to take a break or something?
Yes.
And I was going to ask if Ruth wouldn't mind sending out a press release on the fact that we sold it.
We've already got it drafted, and it's, we were waiting to...
I've already given my words.
Okay, that's good.
All right, let's take a five-minute break.
Yeah, try to hold it to five minutes. Yeah, we got, we got some VT guys back there that are...
That have been very patiently waiting.
Don't you love public meetings?
They probably need five minutes, too.
A meeting back order, please. And the next item is work session. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And our work session tonight involves on-campus polling precinct, and I guess we'll turn that over to...
Mr. McMahon.
Mr. McMahon, or, I thought Mr. Sandy was here, too.
Okay, yeah. Well, if you remember the last time we talked about this issue, a option came up about creating two on-campus polling places for precincts. And so we were given the charge to look at the maps and maybe see if there's an option for that. The reason it made sense to look at that was because if you go one on-campus polling precinct, then we were having difficulty balancing the numbers between all seven districts without making some other substantive changes to two areas outside of the campus. And so, and so we looked at it, and Steve, I think, Steve, do you have it up? I think that's the existing, how it looks now, E3.
Is in light blue.
Right, which includes part of the campus, so does F1, and I think a portion's in G and a portion's in A. And so Steve, we'll go to the next map, we'll show you what we did. That hatch part shows you the areas of change. What we did is we created an E3, like the prior option, and then we also created an F3. And the F3 is, like E3, is only areas that are Virginia Tech residencies, on-campus housing. What they include are the military dorms, I think they, they're undernamed RASH, maybe. Yeah, he's... E3 has that whole list of dorms. It also includes, under that, special purpose housing. Because we're able to add all the residencies where before, if you remember, we couldn't add them all because it made the numbers even worse, we were able to add everything. And so we added special purpose housing, which is those areas on the other side of the bypass, if you're on Price's Fork Road, that includes the sororities and fraternities. So those were added into E3, and then there's a list of the dorms that are proposed for F3. E3 would be much bigger than F3 in size. However, it's very difficult to add more to F3 for two reasons. One, E3 has a big block that we cannot split that has over 5,000 or so living in it. And that, more importantly, F3 or F has got a large amount of voters, and so when we added this, for instance, we had the special purpose housing districts initially in F3. However, we had to move them to E3 because we were worried about the number in F overall becoming disproportionate to the other districts. becoming disproportionate to the other districts. And so we went ahead and stayed with E3 and F3, E3 being much bigger. We notified Randy of this, and so if they do end up doing a polling, one location that has both polling places, it will have to accommodate E3 and expect more voters voting there than F3. But from a legal standpoint, it won't have any, have any impact. If you look at the graph, Steve's kind of pointing down with the arrow, it shows the changes, they're really very minor. A few hundred are taken from A and put into F, and then a few hundred are also taken from G and put into F. And so F has gained a few, and A and G have lost a few. E has remained about the same, and we didn't even touch B, C, and D. The other change we made, we had to, because we were getting rid of the current E3, which had housing that was not on campus, and now the new E3 would be only housing on campus, we moved this option, moved some of the housing in the airport acres area from E3 back to A3, and that's where they used to vote prior to creating E3. And they would vote at Beeks Elementary like they had previously, but not the last election. So I don't think that would cause a big stir. In fact, we heard from a few people that resided there that they were, that when they heard about this option, they were hoping that they would be moved back to Beeks, away from the airport road, so.
Right.
Airports. Any questions?
Any question with the board?
A quick, quick thing, and then I have a request. Just, this is very minor, but in the draft, in the second map, the map you have up there, sorry, go back, one more.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Right there. There is a little change, it looks like, to G1 there, which isn't striped, just so we count for that, the area bounded by College and Roanoke Street, right in the, right next to F3. That used to be F, and now it is part of G1, it looks like. So I just, I just want to make sure that that's acknowledged.
Oh, yeah.
Do you see what I'm talking about, Marty?
Yeah, you mean above, like, kind of in the corner of G, F3, and F1?
Yeah, yeah. So I just want to make sure that that's striped, and so if you go ahead and have a public hearing, those people are indeed notified because they will be changing district as well.
Right. And that area is where we had a split. It was right up in that area where one of the dorms were actually split in half.
Yeah.
And because of the census block going through the dorm, we don't set the census blocks, those are set by the state, Steve, or the federal government, I'm not sure who does it, but.
The Census Bureau.
Yeah, Census Bureau. So there was a split there, but I'm glad you pointed that out.
Yeah. The other thing, too, is that I was wondering if, maybe not now, but we could acknowledge, allow the Virginia Tech students who've waited through the whole meeting to come up and share their thoughts. They're from an engineering, engineering study that worked with the, with the registrar's office. We could do that now, or we could ask questions.
Any folks want to come up and give us your take on what's going on here?
Good evening, thank you for having us, first of all. My name is Jared Myers. This is our senior design team for the Industrial and Systems Engineering School at Virginia Tech. This is Spencer Lowick, Cameron Hall, and Becky Christensen. And we are working with Randy Wertz to decrease the amount of time that it's been taking people to vote, especially at E3, because there was a lot of congestion there at the last presidential election, where there were surges at the end of the day, and some voters had to wait up to two and a half hours to vote, obviously resulting in, again, a lot of people even possibly leaving the line because they don't have the time to wait. Being in the middle of the day, if they come in between classes and they see that the line is, you know, X amount of distance and length or so, they may not have the time to vote, so they may have to go back to class. So they may just show up and leave. I'm going to be willing to decrease that because obviously the goal of the registrar's office is to, you know, maximize the number of citizens who can vote and who can vote in a timely manner. So again, with having these two precincts put on campus, we see how that might affect the students. First off, the students aren't going to have to necessarily build their day around going to vote. They can conveniently, once class is over, they can just walk across campus, or, you know, the class that they might have just had might be even right next door to the place that they might be voting, such as Squire Student Center. And they might be able to go ahead and vote in a much more timely manner because you don't see that enormous surge at the end of the day, when people have to, you know, go to class, do homework, and then they go vote. They might be able to eat lunch, go to class, vote, then do work. So it's against a huge convenience factor for students. So you're going to see an increase in student voters, and then again, you're going to see less of a surge, and you'll see the amount of time that it takes to vote go down drastically. And we're also looking at the resources within the polling places. So as far as how many, how many machines you'll need, how many poll books you'll need to register voters, and looking at, you know, maybe if we have three poll books, how long does it take to process voters versus having four poll books? So we're thinking resource allocation, as well as this location that is being proposed to you all. So if you guys have any questions, we are, we're happy to field any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I'm just going to make a comment, all right? I appreciate you guys wanting to get the precinct there. I don't have any problem with it at all. But I'm an old-timer, I guess.
Aw.
Yeah.
And.
Short timer.
Short timer, too. So I can say whatever I want, right?
Uh-oh.
But one of the things, when I was a young man, voting was 21, okay? And I really had more desire to vote than I had to get my driver's license. I thought it was so important. And polls are open from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And I think that might be something you need to consider. Like I said, I don't have any objections, it's just what's happening with the way things are going today versus 50 years ago. I'm not quite 71 yet, a little over 29, but it's just, you know, it's a different world for me. And they open at 6:00 in the morning for a reason, so people in the morning can vote, people in the evening can vote, you know? And I thought, it disturbed me a little bit when they had all the problems of everybody trying to vote at the same time. And it's one day in my life, ever since I was 21, that I was there and I was always one of the first ones at the polls, my entire life. So just, you know, something that, where are your priorities sometimes?
And we're, again, we're not with any kind of on-campus.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
We're here for a purely optional standpoint.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a comment about that. I do think it's extremely important because people are staying out in the freezing cold for a long period of time, and you do lose people, and it does discourage people from voting. The other problem, not just students, but I will tell you personally, that people tried to vote during the presidential election at various times that were working members of the community, and they had to go back to work. They couldn't get it done during their lunch hour, and some of them worked shifts, so they couldn't get back to the polls. And I feel very strongly, this is America, it's a democracy, and voting should be so that people can go and easily vote. I mean, this is America. And I know what you're saying, Jim, because I'll stand out there in the pouring rain all day long waiting in line, but why would I want an elderly person, or why would I want somebody that's making a living and paying taxes not be able to vote because they have to get back to work? So I think there's a lot that needs to be done in this country, period, about voting, but specifically in Virginia, and I think our county needs to get ahead of the game and make sure we're providing access. And I really appreciate what you guys are doing because, you know, it's a complex problem to think about. And so I'm really passionate about it because I know what happened during the last time during that voting, and it just wasn't right, in my opinion, that's my personal opinion, to have, to have students standing out there in the freezing cold. I mean, and I know, you know, like, you had people out there, but you had people, you had people all day. So.
And all the reason. Squirt it out.
And they might have jobs, too. They might be working, and a lot of students work, so this is their time to go, they can't get in, so they don't come back.
Well, it's just, I just think my.
I just had to say that because I'm.
One quick, one quick thing, too, is that, you know, we looked at the dormitories and the half of this dorm vote over here, and the other half vote over there, and it just added to confusion, and it sort of put them, you know, all in perspective that either all these people will go to F3 or E3 or whatever, and it'd be a lot, a lot better on the students and things. Then, I was at one poll, and the people working at the polls, this was in an E3, I guess, a couple of years ago, and some people, some students come in to vote, and the people there at the poll says that, "I think you owe it Fallen Branch." Well, they wasn't at Fallen Branch. I said, "I think that's wrong." I said, "They're supposed to be, you know, either the way the dorm split, one or the other," you know? So I think it's going to eliminate and streamline things, and make it easier for the students to participate in the elections and things.
Yes, sir. We actually worked the most recent gubernatorial election, and there was actually students who, you know, they're on campus, and they see a bus that just transports students from campus to the polling place and just says, "Voting on." So they jump on, they get there, and they realize, "Oh, I actually can't vote here." So again, that's another, an instance that would discourage people from voting and coming back a second time around. And that was a much more prevalent issue at the presidential election, from what we've been told by Mr. Wertz. And again, that, that's really what our attempt is here, is to get it on campus. And also, the main alternative that we're looking at right now is to put it in one of the main student gathering areas, so, you know, like a Squire Student Center. They have a massive ballroom that can easily facilitate two polling place elections at the same time. And again, we would just, you know, put up signs, "If you're in this dorm, you vote over here." If you're in this dorm, you vote over here, to, again, simplify the process for students because just the nature of the beast, many students don't know much about voting because many of them, especially in the presidential election, hadn't voted before.
Right.
So whenever you have these instances, you want students to be well-informed so that you personally vote. So that's what we're really looking at right now.
I appreciate your efforts, and I hope we can get this done. And, you know, when I said the 6:00 thing, you know, I'm serious about it.
He doesn't know that you all don't go to bed until 6:00.
Yeah.
It's all right.
I've been there, done that.
Me, too.
My dorm had to get real quiet before I could even begin to study. But being a former government teacher, and I'm sure you all had government and civics, but we have it around here in 12th grade, and so one of the things that, all those years, that I wanted my students to be able to do was to vote. Those that had turned voting age at, while they were still in high school. And for a while, you had to, a long time ago, you had to go and register here in Christiansburg at a different place. And so we made up a little jingle, it was second door, second floor, on the top of the co-op store, that's where you went to register. And any kid that had me in school knows that that's where you go. But, and I think it's more than, you know, like you said, they're not quite sure what they, they do. I think it's important to get the students involved ahead of time, be sure they register, be sure they know where they do this, be sure that they become, you know, knowledgeable about what's going on. And one, just one last thing, my mother, who was at this time about 65, somewhere between 65 and 70, she came to visit me, and she stayed longer than she intended to, but she needed to be with me. And so on the day that she was to vote, she got up early in the morning, drove all the way to Eastern Virginia, to Portsmouth, she voted, turned around, and came back that night. So that's the kind of history I have as far as voting's concerned, and it's really important. In my day, you had to pass a voting, you had to pass a test, and a lot of other things. All right, it's not 100 years ago, but. But I will tell you, I came home living, and I went to my dad, and I said, "How dare they ask me these things, you know? Why should I have to tell them how to interpret a section of the Constitution when I may know what the thing is saying, you know?" So I agree, I'm so glad you did this, thank you. I think it's good to accommodate people's needs, and, you know, Jim, if they don't get up at 6:00, it's okay.
No, it's not. I'm up at 2:00.
They don't make the runs to McDonald's until midnight, right? Okay.
Keep going, you're going to leave here at 2:00.
May I ask you a question? Okay. Yeah, anyway, I actually have a question about your design class. Are you looking at, and maybe this is kind of beyond your project scope, are you looking at other polling locations, or are we just focusing on E3? Because of course, you know, I think as Ms. Biggs was pointing out, I mean, this is a larger issue, and even in Montgomery County, I mean, we, in especially the presidential elections, we have all over the county that have quite long lines. And, you know, I've been at numerous ones where people have left the line because, as Ms. Biggs said, you know, people who work at 9:00, they got to get to work at 9:00, you know, they can't lose those wages by, by standing in line. So are, what is your, kind of, the scope of your examination, or is, do you know if Mr. Wertz is, is thinking about applying, if it's just narrow, is Mr. Wertz thinking about applying your findings to other locations?
Right now, our scope is focusing on E3, and again, now that we're considering the addition of another precinct, where the entire Virginia Tech student community, and how that, how voting operations will go there. But it's from an operational standpoint, when we look at resource allocation, so how many poll books, or how many new voting machines that we might put in a precinct, we're actually using simulation software to determine, under these certain conditions with these, with this number of resources, how long will it take somebody to vote, given an arrival, given, you know, an arrival distribution, which we can, again, model because we know how many people are in each of the precincts. So that can actually be applied to any polling place.
Or is it scalable?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So again, if we recommend a set of resources, so these are the conditions that you should follow in order to minimize the wait time for students, that can be applied anywhere. That's not specific to Virginia Tech. That can be, again, calculable for any precinct.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Anybody else?
I guess our next steps will be to bring this back in the form of a resolution, Marty, is that correct?
I think the next step is get some input from Tech.
Yes, we did, we have sent this information over to Virginia Tech. Appreciate you guys being here tonight. I got the notice out fairly late about the work session for this evening, but we've sent it to Dr. Wilson at Tech, and I'm sure he'll be reviewing it with Dr. Steger in the coming days.
I would like to say one thing, I think we are ahead of the curve, and we've had all the polling places, we've only had, really, this has been the problem with the longest lines have been. I think we're trying to address it. I like the fact that we're engaging young people to say, "Hey, get involved with the system. We've got this resource over at Virginia Tech. Instead of paying $50,000 for a study, we've got these bright young minds coming up with a nice plan." Frankly, I'm excited about having the Corps of Cadets voting, and, you know, they tend to vote conservatively, and all of that, 3, you know, you got to look at positives of this aspect, but I know that there's.
Are you saying that I don't appeal to the Corps of Cadets?
I'm not certain. I don't know about that. I'm just saying I'm excited, the way this looks, that, you know, there are a lot of people that are afraid of having students vote, not me. I'm looking forward to having you guys engaged. I think this is an important step in making it easier for you to vote, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, guys. If you guys have any other questions, you guys can have Randy contact us, and we'll get back to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time and your efforts, and good luck.
So, yeah. Can I, could I just, just so everybody's aware, and just so I'm clear, is that the process going forward will be that we were going to get some input from Tech, and then the next action that we would need to take is to, to schedule a public hearing, in which, and again, I will repeat my, my desire to have not only a public hearing here, but a public hearing on Tech campus, as long as we can find space, and I, I should be able to help with that. And then, then we'll, we'll discuss, and then we would have to pass, pass an ordinance here.
Correct.
To make those changes. Is that correct?
Yeah, once we get input from Tech, and they say it's okay, or they want little tweaks here and there, then we'll develop an ordinance, and then the ordinance will then come to you to schedule a public hearing, and we can do two, we can do one here and one on campus. And then we have to advertise that, and then after the public hearing, the board's got to approve the ordinance, and then it would go into place for the November election.
And as far as, though, do we normally do public hearings outside?
No, you would do two. I would do one here, because that'd be customary, and then you can do another, I mean, you can. You can own as many as you want.
We've done public hearings, we used to do the school board, we used to hold them in the different schools around the county.
Okay.
So it's been done.
Thank you.
Smart of the primary.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I was at Christopher High School.
Nine hundred people and 500 deputies.
Guess wouldn't that bad, would it? It would've been worse, huh?
All right, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion to go out of work session?
So much.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please. And thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Brown?
And 6:00 is a good time.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Aye. All right, the next item on the agenda is county attorney's report.
No report, Mr. Chair.
County administrator's report.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of things to mention to you tonight. Had a good meeting with representatives from the two towns, and Virginia Tech, and VDOC last Friday, talking about passenger rail to the New River Valley. Looking, looking, looking to try to begin to formulate a plan to make sure that we continue to advocate for passenger rail to come down to the New River Valley. As you're aware, it's slated to come to Roanoke probably around 2017, by the time everything's put together for that. It would be, in my opinion, at least five to 10 years before it comes beyond Roanoke to here, so it's not something that's going to happen in a week. But it is something that we need to have one voice and a concerted effort to continue to remind folks that that's the next logical progression for the rail. It's a good meeting. We're supposed to get back together again in early 2014. Kevin Berg with the Planning District Commission is going to be providing some statistical information, and we're going to begin to develop a plan to, to move that forward. So hopefully that will be something that we'll be talking about more and more in the months ahead. Secondly, it's always good when, I think we're a little bit ahead of the game on something. I actually had a meeting with our staff last week to talk about the eagle in front of the courthouse. The eagle is not in any jeopardy of damage, to my knowledge, at this point. It is in a precarious place, but the purpose of our meeting last week was to talk about beginning to develop a master plan for the landscaping in front of the courthouse, excuse me, in front of the new public safety building. As you're aware, the law enforcement folks are looking to do a memorial in front of the building. We really don't have a defined landscape plan as of yet. We were going to be working on that through the winter into the spring, so that when we get to that point in the summer of 2014, we'll be ready to move forward. There has been some continued discussion about, was that eagle ever supposed to be in the new courthouse, or was it supposed to be where it is now? I was not aware of that until it came up some months ago. We can put the eagle anywhere you guys want to put it, it's just going to be a matter of cost. We are going to be looking at restoring, renovating, whatever you want to call that, getting the eagle back to its former glory. We are going to do that, and we'll also be talking about, does it remain on a pedestal structure in front of the public safety building, or do we put it somewhere else? So that's in play for discussion, so we'll be asking some, some thoughts on that in the days and weeks ahead as well. I do appreciate everybody's willingness to spend time on Saturday, January 25th, for an extended work session. We've got a lot of topics to cover that day, to start focusing on 2014 and beyond. We'll be talking about budget, we'll be talking about county properties, we'll be talking about vision and mission again, so that will be a very busy day that I hope will be worthwhile, and if we determine after that day we need additional time, we'll find a time to schedule it. Last thing I just wanted to say, and I'm not going to be long with this at all, but Jim, it's been a pleasure working with you as the board chair. Jim and I have been on a lot of trips and adventures together, covering various things. I do think my most memorable, though, that I will put on my resume, is over the years I've helped council members and board members with issues. Jim had an issue with his truck one day, and I went out to help him in a full suit, and the truck was full of severed buffalo heads. And that's a memory I'll carry with me for the rest of my life. a memory I'll carry with me for the rest of my life. That was, that was something that will go on the resume, you know, of the various things I can help with. I can help with vehicles that are loaded with severed buffalo heads. But, but Jim, it's been a pleasure and I, it's not goodbye, but we'll see you in a different capacity as the days go on. And finally, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Gabriel?
Just a few things. We all received an email recently, a constituent requesting some information or, or suggesting that we look into establishing a dog park somewhere in the county. And he suggested Mid-County Park. And so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I mean, that, that struck me as a very good idea. It's not something that, that exists in Montgomery County and, and knowing, having lived in other communities where there are dog parks, those are just extremely successful and great ways of, of building community in, in certain areas. And so I was wondering if the staff could just kinda, just take a quick look into what would be involved in establishing that. And, um, yeah, so, so that's, that's a request. The second thing is, is, is I said, you know, something briefly outside, but I just wanna add, you know, again, my, my thanks to, to Jim and best wishes for the future. I mean, you've been, you've been a, a friend and a mentor the two years that I've been on here and you will be, you will be sorely missed and wish you all the best for the future. And then finally, I just wish everyone happy holidays and, um, see you after the new year.
Could, could I add? I, I guess I was paying not enough attention. On what, establishing what at the dog park?
Oh, just, just looking into what would be involved in establishing a dog park.
Okay.
We're, I'm gonna bring up something on that if I can. Cause I got the email and I started trying to figure out, if we do this new animal shelter, there's a lot of acreage over there. Could we incorporate it over in that area?
That's, yes, sir. We've got a lot of land over there. One of the things that, I know Carol's already placed a call, um, to look at, you know, that, that's, most of that property's an old landfill. So there are some limitations on what you can do with that property. At one point, we had ball fields on part of that property. You know, the, the ball fields have been strongly discouraged, if not downright eliminated from most old landfill sites. But we are talking with our engineers about what, what type uses could we have. We do have property out there and it wouldn't be that big of a stretch to try to do something like that, so.
It might be a nice location.
Yep. So we'll look into it and bring information back.
Thank you very much, Matt. Supervisor Creed?
Uh, yeah, I've got, uh, one thing here. The gentleman that has spoke to us that lives on Mount Pleasant, Mr. Beasley, David Beasley, uh, this is, of course, is the second time that I've, not him, but it was someone else the last time called me about that. And, uh, I've talked to, you know, probably 10 or 12 people down there that, more than just the trucks being there and being a nuisance to them down there, going forward and backwards as they do when the thing's going off, when they back up, is the jake brake on these trucks. They said, you wanna get really upset, go to sleep about 1:00 in the morning, about 3:00 in the morning, here comes these jake brakes coming down there. And that will wake you up and that will...
Scare you.
Make sure that you stay up most of the night. Uh, and I guess the more you listen to it, the madder you get. I've had to help a couple of people, it was pretty angry, that, you know, they don't have the right to go to sleep and have a night's sleep. So I don't know what can be done. I just would like to have all of our people that can put a little elbow grease to it and see if we can figure out some way of, of slowing this thing down or having, uh, hours of operation that are from daybreak in the morning to it ends of the evening and nightfall of the evening. So that, it just seems that we should be able to do that. There's no call for them to have to have trucks in there all hours of the day and night.
Well, Garrett, they're not getting them all down there, cause we're getting quite a few down in the prices for Gary and McCorry area. It's the black tandem trucks with LES on them, you know, and you'll see them, one right behind the other and then two or three or, or something along those lines. So, um, you know, you think...
I think their, uh, time has kind of gone on what they can do down there for right now and they're reapplying. So while they're reapplying, probably will get a whole lot...
Yeah, they're switching back and forth. But to me, it seemed like somebody should be able to look at, is it, is it 10,000 square feet that they can field?
And I do, I, I would like to make one comment on that. Mr. Beasley alluded to the fact that the county didn't replace Ron Bonham. Well, we have certified ENS staff that, that monitor that now. Bill Yeager's certified. I think John Broughton is also certified. So it's not like we don't have staff. We have different staff, but they know how to administer this.
Right.
Um, we'll gather the information. I'm concerned about the hours of operation as much as I am about what they're doing with the, with the soil. That's, I don't know...
Yeah, I think that would be secondary to, to have them just be quiet until time to get up.
I, I, I don't know what regulations we have for some of that, but we'll investigate it for sure.
That's all.
Ms. Perkins?
Okay, um, I want to remind myself and remind us that at 2:00 on Thursday, um, the judge will be here, Judge Turk, to administer the oath to those of us who were elected this time. That's Todd back there and, and this Creed and myself. So I'm looking forward to that day. I do wanna say, I thought we had two very successful dinners this past week with the legislative dinner and also with the school board. I think we were able to clarify a number of things, particularly with the school board. I, I hope that whoever's the chair, they will keep us informed about having some quarterly meetings and maybe even more than just a quarterly meeting with these two bodies. I think they're important. And I know Ms. Biggs will probably talk about having a, a meeting with the town of Blacksburg again, cause that's been quite a, a while since we've, we've had that. I guess the other thing is I will be going to the Alliance meeting on Wednesday. That is a noon meeting. It's to be held here in Blacksburg at the, um, what is it, the Technology Building, whatever we wanna call that.
Yes, ma'am, Technology Manufacturing Building.
That's our great big white thing sitting up on the hill there. Okay. Then to end it off, um, thank you, Jim, again. I really appreciate your leadership, but like I said tonight, more, I appreciate who you are and, um, I, um, wish you well. I know you'll surface right away and doing something exciting. And you never know where you might go from there. So, um, Godspeed to you and, um, I really can't imagine what it'll be like without you. I just don't know who I'm gonna have to fuss with, but, um, anyway.
You got two gentlemen right beside you.
They can make Gary a Todd, one of those two would not hurt.
You can consider yourself the thorn between two roses. I mean, the rose between two...
Well, like I said, you know, we have a difference of opinion, no, but thank you very much and thanks for being with us. And Todd, we'll welcome you aboard a little later on, right? Okay. And good night. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And Steve, I don't know how you came to your decision, but I think it's a wonderful one. And I know that we'll have somebody to come along, but you know, you never replace people. You just find someone new to do the job. And that's about the way it is. It's, it's not that you, everybody can't be replaced. The job can have new people in it. So thank you and Godspeed to you too and all your work. Bye-bye.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, a couple of things. Uh, Mr. Tuck, I had an opportunity to bring up the community garden to the regional jail at the last authority. Well, would you believe, they thought it was a great idea. A great idea. The only thing about it is that they have a one-part-time staff person who supervises the outside inmate crew and it's all that he can do is to keep the grounds up and, and wash the vehicles and so forth. And I told them that your bar association would be willing to make a donation, but I, I, I made a little assumption on, on my part, that it would be for like seeds and maybe fertilizer. Well, the problem is is if that bar association could make a significant continuous donation to pay for some part-time, uh, staff hours to supervise the people while they tended the garden, then they probably could, could make it work. But with only that one part-time person who's stress thinly, they couldn't do it with existing staff. Also, they, they have a, is a, a part-time transportation officer that may be interested in picking up a few extra hours and supervising the inmates.
The bar association, we've got about 100 members. We all put in about $100. I figured I could get $1,000 out of them. And then I also thought I would approach some of the farmers I have, I know down in Shawsville area about plowing the land and like. And that's a ballpark. I don't speak for a bar, but it's, typically, we've done some things like that. I think if we see some success, then that may be something that the bars willing to do on a regular basis. But I'm, I guess, as somebody who is seeing the state, you know, we all talked about, and I, I mentioned a lot last year, not picking up inmates, two and three-year sentences that they're gonna serve now at that jail. If we could utilize it, maybe it is, we, we utilize a part-time person, see how it works, see what the costs are and try to work with it. I think any type of program that we have will be received well and I think it'll be also a, a good thing for the communities, whether that food goes back to the food banks in each, whether it's Salem, Franklin County, Montgomery County, Roanoke County. But, and then I would also approach each one of the other bars. But I don't know that I'm gonna be able to raise that kind of money to be able to say, okay, here's $10,000 per year guaranteed to be able to provide. It's the type of thing that I might be able to get $1,000 as a seed program, so to speak, to get things going. And then start looking at towards the community. But as someone who goes down to that, that place, as someone once told me, those fellows are gonna get out and those ladies are gonna get out, they're gonna be somebody's neighbor at some point in time in their life. And when they get out, and, and so if we can get them out and doing some things, I think it's gonna benefit all of us. So I, I would say if we can push to, even if it's gonna cost a little bit of money to have that part-time guard maybe become a full-time, I'd like to see about approaching it. And then I'll work on the other, the seeds, the fertilizer and the plow.
Let, let me ask something. When you talk about that, I, I need to ask a question. Exactly what kind of tools would they use to cultivate the soil once it's been plowed?
You, you, believe it or not, when they're cutting brush on the side of the roads and things like that, they're using tools, but they don't put a convicted murderer with a chainsaw.
That's right. That's right.
They put somebody who maybe has written some bad checks, or maybe somebody who's battling a drug or substance abuse problem with that hoe or that shovel.
And I understand that, but I also understand that, you know, if we have a choice, being in the town of Christiansburg, and we have a choice of sending someone there that's a little rambunctious or having one of the prisoners that we have that is real calm and easygoing, we're gonna send the, the, the rambunctious one down there, uh, for lack of another word. So...
I'm not, I, I'm not disagreeing with that statement. I'm not putting Sheriff on the spot, but I understand...
I know it's funny, I didn't mention his name, but, uh, I do know that that is, is common nature to, to what we would do.
But, you know, they ran a farm over in Land for years. And, well, we use a trash pickup program near in the county, but we also use a lot of the inmates to do things like clearing brush and, and taking care of things. The, the sheriff's been, and I'll say, you know, we talked about Randy being, moving forward with some things. The sheriff has been moving forward on that. It's not unusual to see on 460, those guys picking up trash or doing other things. They're, they're professionals. They are not gonna give somebody who's inappropriate a, a weapon to be able to hurt somebody with. And they're gonna be searching them, so they're not gonna be, and, and the other thing is, garden implements are kinda hard to put in your pants and sneak a, you know, a, a spade or something like that in there. So, uh, obviously, we have to leave it up to the professionals, but it's something that I would like to try to explore. If it means that our, our jail cost per inmate for, to cover another $10,000 to have somebody, and it, it's gonna work per inmate, maybe, you know, 10 cents. But then we get something back from the community. We get something where there are some of those folks who don't want to be inside all the time, that wanna be out in the sun, who are gonna be willing to work. Just, if you can ask the sheriff, there are people that want to get out and do that trash pickup. They, it is something that their goal, the garden can be the exact same way. It can be a tool that the staff could use. You misbehave, you're not getting outside. You're not gonna be able to do this.
I think that, um, you know, working to get, uh, a person, I mean, some hours or something to supervise would be a, a bigger task. The thing about it is that, uh, the Western Regional Jail, they watch their pennies. And it means that the, the cost would go up a little bit for the, the owners like, you know, Franklin County, Salem, you know, Montgomery. Because it's a good idea, I don't mean that they want to fund it.
I know.
They, that's the reason why they...
You're one of many.
Wanted the, the money, uh, the significant donation, continuous donation, I think is what it was. Uh, one other thing, too. Uh, this is about eight, nine months ago. We talked about the Workforce Development Group, CLEO Group, entertaining a skills gaps analysis for the Mount Rogers and New River districts. What's, uh, this is a snapshot of Montgomery County. I didn't figure you wanted to see what was going on up in Carroll County. You wanted, uh, uh, this is, and I'll give it to Craig to, uh, drop it. Now, what's gonna happen when they finalize filings? They're gonna come, uh, to the boards throughout the district and present their findings to, uh, those boards and we'd have plenty of notice, invite people from the towns and so forth. But that's something for, uh, just to put in his, um, report.
Yep.
Also, uh, I went to the Western, Western last week, the Western Virginia Emergency Medical Services Council meeting. And, uh, this is their annual report, you know, and a lot of people don't know what it is, but, uh, what that council is, and I didn't know until I got on it, of the people that's involved and, um, how the money that come through and the support for EMS that come out of that group, the grants, the, was it the four-for-life or five-for-life funds?
Four-for-life.
Four-for-life funds come through them and so forth. And you'll look on there when they gave out the awards. And I, and regardless, uh, you know, this is, uh, outstanding EMS administrator was Joe Cole, the captain of the, of Christiansburg Rescue Squad. Of course, throughout the region, other people was, was recognized. But I thought that was pretty good that one of the hours was recognized out of all the people. So I give that to Craig to also put in the box for you to look at.
Thank you.
Uh, Jim, uh, I appreciate you, buddy. And, um, sorry to see you leave. I mean, uh, when, when the returns came in, and I, I think I got them about 11:20 or something, it was something along at night. And, and I didn't sleep, uh, the rest of the night because it, it made me wonder what's gonna happen to, to this bunch right here. You know, what's gonna hold us together? What's, you know, you have been, uh, a person, in my opinion, who vote for what they think is right, not for what they think is just good for the district, but what is good for the entire county. And sometimes, you know, you might have voted to, uh, increase taxes, but you thought it was the best thing for the county. And thank you for voting your heart and your conscience and not, you know, being district-specific, you know, saying, oh, my district wouldn't go for that. But what's the greater good, the, the greater good of the entire county is what you, what you done. And thank you. And everybody, I did owe what people said. We wish, uh, staff a, a Merry Christmas and, and all this good stuff that people's already said and I'm not gonna beat it anymore.
Supervisor Biggs?
Okay, a, a few things. First of all, I've been on this board 18 years and I've never had a request for any kind of VDOT funds to be used for roads or anything. And I finally got a request from a constituent and I sent you guys an email to, um, I'm gonna request that we put guardrails, use money for guardrails. And, uh, what happened is Glenn Dindel is a constituent, a constituent of mine and actually escaped, um, a pretty bad, what could have been a bad accident last March in a snowstorm when his car went off the road. And so we do, we do need to, uh, look at this. And he's already called and gotten a reference number. And this has been turned into Craig. And so what do I officially have to do to make this happen?
Well, from that point, when it, when... Well, from that point, when it, when Supervisor Biggs sent it to me, we forwarded it to David Clark at VDOC and David's reviewing it and is supposed to get back with a response. Once we receive that response, I'll get it back out to y'all and you can decide your next step.
Okay, thank you. I'm so excited, it's the first time. I'm so excited. All right, now, I did attend the New River Valley Community Services Board meeting, and as you know, Susan Baker resigned her position as Executive Director. She'd been with us for a year due to family and health issues, and so they'll be on the search for a new director. And while we were there, they gave an update of what happens in Montgomery County when you run into a situation like happened with, uh, Creed Deeds and his son. One thing I came away with is that they seem to keep calling for beds and they've called all the way to Northern Virginia before for beds. So they did not report any cases where they could not get a bed. Um, I also, um, have a copy that I will give to Craig when I have to bring it to him of, you know, the, the approach that's used here, so that you guys are aware of it. And of course, things can change with, you know, the governor's recommendations and whatever the General Assembly does, but they did go over it with us because there was such concern about the bed space and no one could understand. And I still don't understand the whole bed thing with Creed Deeds' son. I still don't understand why it was said they didn't have beds and then they did have beds. But, um, evidently for our Community Services Board, they, they just keep calling the whole time, calling, calling, calling till they can get a bed. Then I had the honor of being asked to serve, and I will share this with you guys, um, I wasn't sure what it was until I went, and it is bipartisan. It's, uh, the Governor-elect's Local Government Policy Transition Council meeting. I, I attended it last Thursday, um, and it was very, very interesting. Uh, what happened is they put together a transition team of local government people from VACO, VML, and, um, Virginia's, what is it? First Cities, Cities First, whatever. And there were, um, there's, I think, 30 people were asked from VACO. Uh, we sat around a table in the Capitol Building in a hearing room from 9:30 until 12:00. The meeting was scheduled to go and it did. It started on time, it ended on time, and these are the things that we were discussing and, um, there was total agreement, if you can imagine, from all these diverse, uh, localities and organizations, and it was bipartisan, like I said. Financing of K through 12 public education and, uh, with that, rethinking of policies adopted during the Great Recession, nearing the achievement gap among Virginia schools, and funding the standards of quality revisions that's adopted by the State Board of Education that will be coming up. Also discussed were unfunded teacher pension liability that can have the, uh, impact on local governments. Uh, we all have to pay and so does the state, but if the state would carry their part on the book, on their books, it will really help us out, as we discussed at VACO previously. I think I brought that to your attention. Uh, another interesting topic, the financing of election administration, including reimbursement of costs associated with recounts and sharing expenses associated with the conduct of state elections and that, and we even brought up the, um, purchase of, uh, election machine, of the, the machines that we use. Mandate relief and the issues discussed there were public safety, as Tommy's very well, uh, line of duty, stormwater management, um, improvements in local fiscal impact process, review of mandates on local governments and human services. Um, what impressed me about this group is that the chairs, um, consist of, um, the three organizations represented there had people. So our person is Harrison Moody, who is the, um, VACO president, and the chair for VML was, uh, David Helms, the town, uh, the town mayor of Marion, and then George Wallis is the mayor of the City of Hampton, and he was the Virginia First Cities Chair. So they ran the meeting. Governor-elect Hall attended the meeting. Um, he appointed, and some of you are, know this person well, um, Suzette Deslo, who is the deputy, um, the Deputy Secretary of the Commonwealth will be the contact person for this group. Um, this probably won't be the first meeting. The, the group will probably be pulled together or will be divided into subgroups to work on specific things. The Governor-elect was very open in understanding what we go through. Now, I don't know what he can do with the General Assembly, you know, but he was very, he recognizes the, the fact that we need to look at some kind of tax reform, and he wants input from local government throughout his administration. And this wasn't the only group that met. I found out afterwards where it's gonna be a transportation group that met right after we met. And so I guess what I would like to ask, um, since I wasn't sure what I was getting into when I first went, um, I would like to ask if, since it is a VACO thing, if in the future, if I go, would our board consider me, uh, to pay the expenses for me to go? I paid my own expenses this time around. Um, and so I, I'd like to bring that to your attention. It was neat to bring everyone together like that, so I'm hoping that that will, will continue. Um, now, the other thing is Jim, I don't know what to say, I sort of said it out there. You are probably, you leaving the board after 16 years. Um, that's the longest-serving person I've served with, 'cause this is my 18th year. So, we've been together a really long time and we've gone through a lot of things together and a lot of health issues, um, uh, deaths in the family, um, all the board-related things that we've done and, and gone through. And you mean the world to me and Jan does too, and we're gonna miss you, but I know just as positive as I'm sitting here that we're gonna be seeing you again. 'Cause that little brain of yours just keeps turning and turning and churning and churning, and you come up with new ideas all the time. I imagine you're gonna be standing right out there saying, you know, I just thought of something. I was on the farm thinking, and I, I think you all need to know about, I can sort of hear it coming, you know? And I know that you're gonna pursue your dirt glue and your hemp and your, and the fire, what is that thing here?
Fire pit.
Yeah, the caddy, yeah, so that'll be good. But, um, I want to wish you the best and I want to wish everybody happy holidays and, um, and Todd, that includes you too. And we'll be seeing you soon on the board, and I guess that's all I have to say.
Supervisor Tuck?
Well, a couple of things. Bill, thank you for bringing that up down there. I know that that's not always easy thing to do and I appreciate you keeping it in the forefront of mind.
I'm, I'm, I'm not a popular person. I just ask what needs to be asked.
And I appreciate you doing that. Uh, a few things. I had the opportunity to go to Christiansburg Volunteer Rescue Squad's dinner. Uh, our own Neil Turner became Hall of Fame member, um, in regards to that. Also, I'm sitting there listening. They say the average time for when the, from the time that they roll out to the time they get back to the station, it takes about an hour and 10 minutes total time. But there were members who had been on 400 calls in one year. They do the math. Those are folks that are making a tremendous sacrifice for our community. They aren't getting paid, uh, and they need the training. That's just the calls that they went on in one year. And so I'm very thankful that those folks are out there, uh, they volunteer on Christmas, they volunteer on Thanksgiving, and they give so much of themselves. In that line of giving, uh, since I've been on the board, you've been our leader. Being a leader means making sacrifices. You've done that. Being a leader means making the right call for the entire county and sometimes putting yourself second. You've done that. And not sometimes, but you put yourself second a lot of times. Many times, I, as I said out there, you pick up, I pick up the phone and I say, Jim, what do you think about this? And he say, Chris, maybe you need to think on it. Maybe that's not the greatest idea in the world. Um, you know what? That's what a friend does. They tell you not what you want to hear, but what you need to hear. And I consider you a friend. Now, I got permission from the boss, and you may know that every Tuesday night, my wife has, for the last 13 years, has been inviting people for dinner. It's kinda started off as her way of being able to say, I want some time, not just with you, Chris, and not just with the kids, but with some other adults. Uh, it's developed over time. And I got approval. I, I'm not allowed to invite people without, I get the approval of, of Susan, but you and Jan are invited anytime you want to come. Um, I consider you a friend. I'm gonna miss you.
All right, I got another 40 minutes before we're gonna extend it.
One quick thing, and the hustle and bustle, uh, and I think it might have been oversight on our part, that I believe we should have passed a, a couple of resolutions. One commending to LaSalle Britton and, uh, Trina Foster.
Yeah.
And so, uh, if it's a consensus for the staff to prepare those for our next meeting, you know, it would really be appreciated. Better late than never.
Yeah.
And, uh, the last thing I got on, on my calendar, I've been carrying around this for about three months and I think the lady's gonna kill me, but the Plum Creek, uh, Green Box roadway entrance, it's supposed to be a little ditched and washed out there, and I was telling her, I forgot about it, and she said, but it's still there, you know? And so she told me like three or four months ago, so, but if you can get somebody to check on that, you know?
Plum Creek Green Box, yes, sir.
Tell them that, I'm done. Yeah.
Well, all your kind words, all your friendships all the way across the table have been, meant a world to me. I've said this before, our staff that we have in this county is unsurmonable. I mean, there's nobody-
Second.
That could hold up with all the aggravation that we cause sometimes and get the jobs done. And Steve, you're a remarkable person. You've done an excellent job with the county and you're gonna do an excellent job when you go across the pond. And I really respect your decision more than you can know. I, I've always been afraid to take a chance like that, and, uh, I'm glad to see we have people that can and are willing to do it. And it takes a very special person for that. I hope I left two legacies if I do nothing else. My industrial hemp has been my cause for a long time, but if you remember, I had one before that.
Buffalo.
Buffalo.
Yeah.
You know, people kinda forget about that, but, uh, tourism and things of that nature kinda been part of what I've done and tried to do over the years. The buffalo created a lot of that in our early years in that business. And I always like to think I've been a person ahead of my time, but it's time for my time to catch up with me so I can continue doing what I want to do. But I, I don't know how to express the joy and pleasure I've had. In 16 years, I don't think I've ever not returned a phone call, not tried to help somebody. And when you can help somebody other than the big deals that we all have to work on, that's the most gratifying thing I've ever done on the board, and, uh, I'll miss that. And I say to Mr. King, welcome, and I'm sure you'll serve our community well. I'm glad to be in the district we're in, and I offer any support and help I can do for you. I, I don't know what else to say. I'm getting dry and I had a long night. I've been up since 2:00 this morning and anticipating this evening, and, uh, I'm gonna go home and take a sleeping pill and go to bed. I'm not gonna cry. I'll let somebody else do that.
I thought Karen was gonna do that out there for you.
Well, these, these friendships have been just totally amazing and, uh, they're not over. The friendships will go on.
Sure.
All across the board. So, and I will be here for the first 10 or 15 meetings with my five minutes.
Hey, I'm gonna tell you, you need to get a life.
This has been my life.
If you're gonna be here in the next 50.
So if there's nothing else, I call this meeting a joke.
Thank you.
And Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy Christmas.